Yes, I do. Thank you.
Nice.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome again to the Board of Selectment meeting for October 2nd, 2018, for the town of Yarmouth. We're returning from executive session with no action taken. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, we'll go to public announcements. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board?
I'm a little concerned. Are we being sued by Vineyard Wind here? I'm not laughing. I mean, honestly, because it talks about litigation.
Can I make a comment?
No, we're not being sued.
That's good. Okay. Did you want to say something?
No, I was just saying that there are things other than courtroom confrontations that come within the legal umbrella of litigation.
Okay. Now, last week's meeting, I noticed everybody who came to the microphones pretty much seemed to have, each department seemed to have consultants on hire. Who is paying those fees? Where are those fees being paid from?
They're being paid from town funds that have been previously approved by town meeting.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, maybe it was a coincidence, but it seemed like everybody who came to the microphone had a consultant. And obviously, the chief wasn't too happy with his consultant. So I wanted to ask with regard to the police department and the, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, the dispatch center. Now, we, they did a presentation, a combined one, I think, the fire and the police, a couple of years ago or whenever. And we spent like two hours sitting here, an hour and a half, going over details and everything. And towards the end, it comes out, they couldn't really come to any decisions about personnel, and that the center would cost $2 million, just whatever, wherever the center was going to be. And it just, I mean, that's just for openers. And oh, they couldn't, absolutely couldn't come to an agreement as to where it would be. So please, can we bring in somebody from the sheriff's department and find out how they do it, how much it would cost? Because I think we are not going to have an easy time. And it would be way too costly, I think, if it's going to cost over $2 million. Plus, you have to hire personnel of all kinds. So let's first find out how it would work with, if we went with the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Thank you, Vita. Yes, is there anyone else? Yes. Good evening.
Dave Warley, Yarmouth Port, President Local 2122. Originally, the chief was going to talk tonight, I thought, but then he got bumped. So there were some concerns that we had. So here we go. So we believe that the comments, some of the comments made by the police chief and the town administrator were unintentionally misleading and misrepresented the fire department.
Are we going to talk about personnel matter? If we're going to talk about specific individuals, you just did, you talked about two individuals. And I am afraid we're not going to be able to get into a personnel matter here.
If I can, I don't think he referred to personnel. I think he referred to public, two people that made public comments. Am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So that's not a personnel issue.
Did you turn his mic on? I don't know how. Dave, you just gotta speak closer to it.
It's on.
Okay.
I think if there's any caution at all, you should not speak about any personnel matters within the department in terms of any, any specific individuals.
I just, well, so I had this all written down. So basically, I understand the chief was very passionate about defending his department. We're just two of the same, two complementary departments trying to do what's best for the town. There were some things that were said about the study that didn't go over well with us. And then, if I'm allowed to quote something that was said in the public meeting, the chief was referring to the Matrix study, recommending that they drop down to four police officers at night. He stated that he didn't have 14 people sitting around waiting for the next call. We obviously take some offense to that because the implication was that we were just sitting around. It's a false assumption. We're not just sitting around. We're the, one of the busiest fire departments, we are the busiest fire department on the Cape and one of the busiest fire departments in the Commonwealth, if you include our size. We're very, very busy. We operate on different models, so we can't use the same staffing structures. We don't know what's best for them. So we rely on, you know, they rely on officers to be visible in the community, to be a deterrent. We can't do that. We rely on staying in our village departments and being ready to respond to the calls. Another thing that was brought up that a lot of the guys were very upset about was the, it was during the land of duty questioning that went on. There was a reference made to the medical marijuana, saying that we had seen this problem in the fire department scenario. To be 100% clear, we don't have a drug problem in the fire department. We feel that the record should be set straight, that a, there was a candidate for employment that did not get hired, that was screened out through the pre-screening physicals. So we, the implication that we have a problem, I don't think was fair. And I'm trying to redo this as I'm reading it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there was never an inference that there was a problem within the active department. What the commentary was about the, going forward into the future with the permissiveness of the drug culture that we have now, candidates that we are interviewing could have this problem going forward. And the conversation amongst municipal management across the Commonwealth is how are we going to address that? And there could be workplace issues with that, and it's going on right now in the country.
Right. And that's, and that's how we believe you meant it, but that's not how it sounded when we...
That's the way I took it.
And you just wanted to make sure that that was clear. You know, we understand that we're held to a higher standard, and we accept that, and we welcome it. And we think that the town, the town deserves us to be held to a higher standard. And so we just wanted to make sure that those, those things were brought up, that, you know, that's just the way we were feeling. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Christine Greeley. And I agree, that's, it's a big problem that's going to be facing management for a lot of people as the drug legalization goes on. That's something that's been talked about in a lot of forums in a lot of places, so it isn't just unique to this town in any way, shape, or form. It doesn't surprise me, the Mass Municipal or other groups are talking about it. But actually, why I'm here to speak is I wanted to let you know that the hearings on the Vineyard Wind proposals and project are going to start this week, Thursday and Friday. That's actually the first of the 15 that will take place this month. In addition, the ones that had been tentatively scheduled, three of them for November, have now been taken off the docket for the time being. And so there are a team of us from the town, who you are well familiar with, a lot of us, because of the work we've been doing, the talking we've been doing, who are limited participants. And so it's our intent, we've already made the organizational plans for getting to the hearings, starting on Thursday. If there's anything new and exciting, we will certainly let you know. We did, there was a move made by one of the limited participants to try to get a hearing or two, or several of them moved here to the Cape to make it more reasonably accommodating for town employees, for other people who might have to work, you know, and do things for these hearings. And so far, there's been basically a denial. Then additionally, there was a request made that there be electronic formats for the viewing, or for taping, other things like that, for which there has been no response yet to one of the limited participants from Yarmouth who made that request. But I just wanted you to know that the group of us, very concerned about the Bay, have not changed our position. And it's not a problem particularly with Vineyard Wind. It's a particular problem with the whole site of the landing. And so we will be monitoring that, and we certainly will bring you up to date in terms of the things, the materials, or anything that goes on that is important to the Board of Selectmen for the town. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? If not, we'll move on to our public hearing with regard to recycling. And this is the second hearing on this issue. And...
I guess in his absence, I'll tell you, continue, make it fast before it gets back.
I'll begin. My name is Robi Whitehouse. I am the administrative supervisor for the Public Works Division, supervisor for the Waste Management Division. Thank you for your patience and allowing us, and time, and allowing us to do an analysis and meeting with Ed Centio, as you requested. And I'm here with Jill Taladay and Carol Ewing, the co-chairs from the Recycling Committee, and they're going to be assisting me with this presentation. We heard last time that it was important for our Recycling Committee to be here, and they're going to be helping us. And we hear you, and we appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Mike, do we have to do anything to keep, the hearing was continued. So this is a second hearing, right?
I don't think we do.
We don't have to open?
I don't think so. But if you wanted to read the notice, I mean, it's up to you, but I don't...
Do you have it?
Yeah, I have it. Just a minute.
Okay. I'll read the notice into the record. Yarmouth Board of Selectment hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 2, 2018, at 6 o'clock at the Yarmouth Town Hall Hearing Room, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass, concerning proposed policy language updates, as well as policy and fee changes for new recycling-only stickers for the Waste Management Division. Written comments will be accepted by the Board of Selectmen at Yarmouth Town Hall until Friday, September 28th, at 4:30. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Proposed date of change, January 1, 2019. Fee category, proposed fee, resident recycling-only sticker fee, currently zero. Proposed fee, $30. Non-resident recycling-only sticker fee, current zero. Proposed fee, $40. All residents of the town of Yarmouth, as determined by the town residency policy, may purchase a recycle-only sticker at a fee of $30. Non-resident commercial recycle-only stickers shall have a fee of $40. Recycling-only sticker will cover the following: small metal, motor oil, antifreeze, compost, glass, used linen, cardboard, batteries, newspaper, plastic, tin cans, ash, books, magazines, mixed paper, sharps, mercury stickers. May be purchased at the clerk's office in the town offices Monday through Friday. Stickers, when purchased by mail or online, shall receive a discount of $5. Said sticker will expire March 31st of each year. The fee to replace any sticker shall be $5. Sounds like the stuff on my desk. Okay.
Okay. So as we met the last time, we talked about our recycling-only proposal, and we were requested to do an analysis. We will be covering that, along with the recommendations from the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and the proposed policy changes. So when we look at the cost analysis that was done in conjunction with our Finance Department, we see that we used the fiscal 2017 calculations. And there are a lot of unknowns that go into that because of, we can't anticipate what's going to happen in 2018. That's why we used 2017's calculations. Sorry, you see at the bottom of the figure, the notation for total recycling net loss. And that calculation is done based on the cost and the rebate for each of those individual categories, mixed paper, commingled, corrugated cardboard, newspaper, and metal. We kept that same total, $29,265, and carried it over to the next slide as the net losses for the recycling. And we added to that the recycling expenditures, including salary and other expenses related to recycling here in the town of Yarmouth, for a total of $249,265. We added to that the anticipated capital expenditures, items, for example, like a roll-off truck, compactors, heavy equipment, like a rubber tire loader. Those are all pieces of equipment that are used and purchased through capital. And we averaged it out at $30,000. We came up with a total annual cost or need for recycling of $279,265. We divided that by the annual, excuse me, disposal stickers sold annually, or the approximate $8,600, and came up with a figure of $32.47 per sticker. We hope that that's the analysis the two are looking for.
So can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
So that $32.47 is based on 8,600 stickers purchasing a recycling sticker?
We used the stickers sold in the town of Yarmouth, the full stickers sold, as the anticipated calculation divider. Yes.
Okay.
So, so by pulling out the recycling, this is looking at the total cost of recycling, because you're including labor and everything else in that.
Yes.
So, I mean, and that's, you know, I think we're accustomed to looking at the fee presentations for the transfer station as a combined number. So you're pulling this out. So should there be a corresponding reduction? If we were to accept a recycling sticker charge, should there be a corresponding reduction in the overall transfer station charges?
We're going to pull in some assistance from Jeff Colby and perhaps the Finance Director, who might be able to more clearly answer your question.
Sure. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. The reason it was divided over the total stickers is this is taking a step back, looking at a high level. This is the portion of every sticker that would be the cost of recycling. So if you're only going to sell a sticker for just recycling, no trash, it should be using that analysis for the stickers going forward. The assumption being that the number of stickers going forward for recycling only is going to be a relatively small number compared to the overall total.
Right.
So 8,600 is a large number. We expect, based upon interviews and other discussions we've had with people that use the recycling-only piece, that we sell somewhere around 300 stickers for recycling. So relatively small component of the overall. So the way we backed into the analysis was to take the overall cost of recycling. And if we wanted recycling-only stickers to pay for that, that's what the cost would look like through that analysis.
So we have about 300 recycling-only. So if you divided that into the recycling net loss...
It's $10,500.
Then it's, did you do the math already?
Thirty-five, the $35 times 300 is $10,500.
Okay. So it would take, so it'd have to be a lot more than $35. It'd have to be around 100 bucks.
You're talking about the $29,265?
Yes. Yeah.
Well, there's a shared cost of recycling for everyone that recycles. And with everyone, which, spreading that cost across all the stickers, you wouldn't have to unduly burden just the recycling only for the recycling costs. It goes across all the users of the facility.
Okay. So basically, what you're saying is, assuming that everybody, people purchasing a full transfer station sticker, and the people that were doing just a recycling only, that's not what the 8,600 is. So the 8,600 is just transfer station stickers?
That's correct.
We don't have the option now, but you'd have to sell 836 stickers at $35 to make up the $29,000.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, can I ask a question while he's doing it?
Of course. Yeah.
So I still have two issues. One is that we clearly see there's a net loss to the residents for recycling, which, you know, it's difficult because you don't want to disincentivize recycling. However, because the market has changed so much, I'm very much in favor of doing this for our residents, because our residents are the ones who should have the benefit of it and should recycle. I still, based on these numbers, am not convinced that it's beneficial to allow non-residents.
I think that's why you'll see that the next slide offers you three options, and our recycling co-chairs are going to talk about that a little bit more. Is that, is that okay?
Yes.
We'll jump to that next slide and...
Well, the first question that I had is really to echo what Tracy said. If we're losing money on this recycling effort, what would be the justification of opening recycling to non-residents? What's in it for the town of Yarmouth to do that?
That option was offered because we do offer non-resident disposal area stickers. So the option was just laid out there because it was an existing practice that we were already doing for non-residents. And it doesn't need to be that way, and that is why we're bringing this to you, and we're asking you this question. And this next slide talks about the options that we'd like to propose for you.
But I think you'll agree, it makes no, no financial sense for us to do that.
Correct.
I would agree.
She's asking you to judge that.
As a resident of the town of Yarmouth?
I would agree with my statement. I'm glad I mentioned that. I definitely agree with that. The other thing is, I, I don't mean this with any disrespect to anyone, but last time we were here, we talked about how you came up with these fees. There didn't seem to be any real rhyme or reason to it. Now we're backing them in with salaries and capital costs, and we're backing into the number. I can see what's going on there. Not really impressed with this analysis. I think it's just convenient in a way to justify the fee. But that being the case, I think one of the ways we could cut our losses is to stop selling non-resident recycling stickers. But those are my initial thoughts.
We don't sell them now. That's not, we don't sell them now.
It's even worse now. They just dump for free.
Actually, we don't allow non-residents to dump recycling, because it's written in our...
Different from the last time you were here?
Non-residents are not dropping recyclables, because our resident, our requirements, our regulations do say that waste must originate in the town of Yarmouth. And that's one of the policy corrections and things that you're going to see in this presentation.
My other question, though, in addition to the not making financial sense for non-residents is, how do you respond, and what will you do to make sure somebody with just a recycle-only sticker isn't dumping full waste? How will you manage that?
Our personnel is going to be very busy.
That's a great question. And will there be additional personnel that would be required to monitor that? Because as Tracy just pointed out, somebody could come in with several recyclables. They're not followed around the landfill. Then they drive around where the bins are, throw their trash in, and they're gone. It's a great deal for them.
I can tell you what they do right now. Folks who do not have stickers and are coming to recycle only are stopping at our gatehouse, and our gate staff is monitoring them. They are watching them as they go around. And if they see them stopping at the drop-off area, they are calling a recycler, and the recycler is going over and speaking to them. Then they're going to the scale house, and then they're paying the $15 per day price. That is how we're handling it right now. It can be cumbersome, but at least if there's stickers available for the folks who are coming in to recycle, at least they, we know that they have a sticker. It's a way to, it's a way to track it.
I'm not so sure, though, that you can stop everybody that goes by.
Well, we're going to have the...
In time to catch them before they throw their stuff in. I mean, cars really whip through there quite rapidly.
We're going to have the tracking soon. We're going to have the license tracking soon.
We are working with a, we're working with a vendor right now to look at our traffic patterns. We're looking to find out if we can come up with a way to track things easier. We're looking at potentially slowing down traffic so that we can monitor these things. And we are looking at our license plate reader and how we're going to set that up. We had a plan before, but there's some changes going on with how the rail trail's coming into our property. So we are, we are evaluating that to see where we're going to place that equipment. And yes, it will be tracking the stickers.
And what authority does the employees of the waste facility have in terms of dealing with those that are not following the rules?
If...
So in that case, you have a person who went over and paid. Do they have the authority to charge them, fine them, if they're caught recycling or using, dumping without having paid? If you see people in there that are, are doing it, and they're, they leave, they drive out, what authority does the Waste Management have to manage that?
There is a policy. As part of the policy in the town, the Waste Management Superintendent has the ability to fine someone or to, to wage a fine. What we've encouraged staff to do is write down license plate numbers of anyone who is offending, you know, or violating a regulation, and we're monitoring that way. It's staff is not being confrontational. We're doing, you know, the best customer service. We know how, and making sure that they're following rules, and residents are following the rules as well. So supervisors are called, and the supervisors are handling that as, as issues arise.
Good.
So if we said that we'd like a change in policy, that recycling is only allowed if you have a regular sticker. You know, if we made that change, and, and then a year from now, we look at this again, and it's still costing us $30,000, what's the next Is the next step to increase the sticker, the regular sticker for the dump fee? And is that, is that the logical conclusion of this entire process?
Well, that's how it's kind of always been done. The fee has always tried to cover the, the expensive of the service. So, I mean, that's one of the reasons I really have a problem with non-residents. The residents are really bearing the burden of, of people who aren't in our community. We're paying for that. And ultimately, our sticker prices are going to go up based on the, the cost of recycling. But I don't think they're asking for, for people with full stickers, they're, we're asking for the ability to give people the ability that don't have it now to pay... We're asking for the ability to give people the ability that don't have it now to pay just to recycle. So residents now recycle, they can just come in and recycle.
That is true.
They don't have a full sticker at all. They can just go in.
If they have a full sticker, they can go in anytime they want.
But even somebody who buys no sticker now can recycle.
They can go in and recycle. And gate staff stops them at the gate and says, "You don't have a sticker. Where do you live? Do you live in Yarmouth? And what are you doing? Are you coming in? And if, do you have a receipt if you haven't paid? If you do have trash, do you have a receipt that you've paid for the trash? If you're only recycling?" They watch them. They monitor.
What are these people that have recycle-only stickers who are residents? What are they doing with the rest of their trash?
We don't have resident-only stickers at this time. So when people come in and they don't have a disposal sticker and they're saying that they just recycle, we surveyed them and we found that many of them have pickup because they live in apartments. And that pickup service does not provide a recycling feature. That's not one of the options for them. Some of them dispose of their trash at their sister's house. Some of them dispose of their trash at their children's house. We hear a very varied, some of them dispose of their trash at work. We hear a lot of things.
So does that, does that make sense? Are those stories credible?
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of services that...
Somebody doing that, get rid of their trash at work or somebody else's house and then bring their recyclables to them?
Yeah, no, there's a lot of people that get like Kavosa disposal or NOSA disposal. They don't do, some of them don't do recycling. And people want to recycle. So they'll put the regular rubbish and only pay for the ones, you know, you pay. If you put all your recyclables in with your trash, you're doubling or tripling what you're paying for pickup. So they can say, "Well, we're just going to put the regular refuse," and they'll take the recycling in.
So we proposed a few options here. I'm going to let the recycling chairs talk about what those options are so that you can review them.
We get excited, Robie. Sorry. I want to keep you on track.
So we, as Robie suggested, we propose a couple of options. A resident recycle sticker fee for $30 and a non-resident recycle sticker fee for 40, or a resident recycle only sticker for $30. And, or all entry...
I'm sorry, what is the difference here?
There, we're offering, we're suggesting either there's a sticker fee for a resident and a non-resident at two different prices.
Option A.
Option A. Option B is to only...
And is somebody living in another town?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And they don't have any property here?
And there's a, further on, you'll see in the revised regulation, they spell out exactly what resident means. So we can get into that in a minute.
So option B would be to just offer a recycling sticker only for residents. Or option C is a full price sticker only.
So basically, those are all of the options that you just covered. So we just tried to spell them out. One of the other things that we found that we wanted to make sure that you were aware of and to make sure that it was, that we were understanding it correctly was we do have a coupon and pay-as-you-throw available on-site. The pay-as-you-throw is the $15 fee for up to five bags that they, that folks do come in and take advantage of on a regular basis. They pay that at our scale house. And also, we have the coupon books, which are also on sale here at the clerk's office as well as at the disposal area, tend to coupons for $100. It is our understanding that people who take advantage of these options are allowed to recycle. So that is something that we wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with because that's a plan that we've been following. That's, we understand that they are making their payment, so therefore they are entitled to recycle as well.
So they can recycle at any times or just on the trip where they bring their five bags?
On the trips, when they bring their, either their coupon or they pay their $15.
So have we done an analysis if that $15 covers the cost of that? I know that that's probably difficult, but overall, do we know? We don't know?
No.
And one of the things that aren't in our packet tonight that was in the last time was the resident-only stickers from across the Cape. I think a lot of the towns are selling them now. Where does the $30, based on what we've seen in the cost of it, where does the $30 for residents fit? We, because we know already that it costs more than the $30, way more.
Do you want to hear what the other towns were charging their residents back in July when I originally did this presentation? Chatham's charging $5. Harwich is charging $20. Orleans, 25. Mashpee, 25. Dennis, 35, but we understand they're going up. Brewster, pay-as-you-throw. They charge $50. It's a year-round sticker. Sandwich also pays you throw. Their year-round sticker is $60. Barnstable does not charge, but they are requiring a sticker. So folks who live in Barnstable, to recycle, they have to have a recycle-only sticker.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So when we move on, we're looking now at the changes. And there are some detailed changes in the regulations that we hope to go over. And they're in red on your copy as well as on the screen. We reviewed this with the finance office because their clerk's office is actually selling and they are using our regulations to define how stickers are sold. So we added the word disposal to clarify that these are not, this is not a regulation for beach stickers. This is obviously disposal stickers. And we removed the word legal from residents because we're going to get into what residents mean in the regulations. We added the words includes household and recycling to the full disposal sticker. So you'll see that that 162 includes not only household, but recycling as well. So those are the changes in the first paragraph.
Can I make a suggestion with these regulations? Because I don't think 162 is the number anymore. Isn't it 177? I guess my suggestion would be as set by the board. Because you're going to have to amend these regulations every single time something's changed.
And they do get amended every time the price goes up.
But typically, our regulations are separate from the fees.
Okay.
If, I mean...
No, that makes sense. This is just the way it's been done. Typically, it's been...
Yeah, well, we've tried to pull them out of most of the regulations so that way the regulations stand on their own regardless of what action this board, unless they, you'll have to take double action. Because in the past, we've done, we've set fees, but not necessarily changed the regulation. So it just kind of was a byproduct. I think it just has been happening. But I think, you know, the policy should be the policy and then the fee should be as set by the board. I don't think it necessarily needs to be in the regulation, but I'm just one person.
Okay, that sounds great. We can definitely make that adjustment to the wordage if that's what you would like us to do.
And I wouldn't be in favor of the non-resident section at all. I would personally support option B.
Okay, you mean for the recycle-only sticker, just to clarify?
It's in the regulations now, so...
Okay, sorry. So you're absolutely right. So then we jump into it. And all residents in the town of Yarmouth are determined, as determined by the town residency policy, may purchase a recycle-only sticker at a fee for $30. Oh, I was raising the price for a second there myself. So non-residents, which is the reference that Tracy just made, non-commercial recycling-only stickers shall be a fee of $40. And again, it references what the recycling-only sticker covers. Small metal, motor oil, antifreeze, compost, glass, used linen, cardboard, batteries, newspaper, plastic, tin cans, ash, books, magazines, mixed paper, sharps, and mercury.
I'd also like to give the recycling, you know, we're working on such a market that fluctuates so much that there are times where some of these items may be cost benefit, a cost benefit to us to take. So where, there's times where the market may dictate that. I would love to allow that flexibility to take it at that point in time. I don't know how we could work that into a regulation. But to have to come back here, I know it's difficult. But, you know, if it's, if it's, if you're going to make money on it, then I think you should be able to do it, to take as much of it as you can. If it's, if it's going to cost money, I wouldn't say the same flexibility. But to allow you that flexibility to be able to move on that, I think this is something this board should be able to do. But I think it's very difficult to structure it in that way. But, you know, when you look at the specifics, there are some pieces that are, that are better than others. So, you know, one of the products now is in a positive. Corrugated cardboard. We make money on corrugated cardboard, so...
We do. We make, we do. You're absolutely right.
And newspapers, so we could, you know, we don't want to tie the hands of that. So I don't know. That's my, my thinking is to allow some type of flexibility on those types of items.
So we'll go on to the next slide. I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
I was like, uh, where do we go from here?
I just wanted to mention that these items that are listed here are actually waste bans that are promulgated by the DEP. So these are basically illegal to put in the trash and that's why they're here. It's not so much, though I agree with you, it'd be glad, it'd be really good if we could make some money on some of these things.
No, I'm talking about, I understand that and they should be recycling. But I'm talking about in terms of requiring the sticker for the items that potentially are at a net loss. So if we're at a net gain in particular items, we should exempt them at that time from the sticker is what I'm thinking. And I have no idea how you would regulate something like that, but...
I think it's, you know, too complex to add in the what-ifs or the variables. I think if the market dramatically changes so that it affects the bottom line in some significant way, then we'll come back and look at it then. I, like Tracy, would be more in favor of option B unless somebody can convince me why it would be to our benefit to take recyclable materials from non-residents when they're actually costing us money. To me, that makes no sense at all. But the concern I have with the recycle-only sticker is whether the people stick to just the recyclables. I have some concern that there may be those that buy that and attempt to dump other materials and trash in the landfill. We certainly don't want that. Nor do we want, I don't think, any additional personnel costs for trying to monitor that.
Shucks, I thought that's where you were going with that.
In some kind of efficient way. But I, again, I think that they're makeshift numbers, to be very candid with you. But, you know, I'll play along and I'll support option B.
Could I keep going with the regulations? There's a couple more slides, or would you like me to stop and you want to take a vote?
I think I'd like...
You hear the whole president.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so when I go forward again, we have a reference to the disposal sticker that's on this slide. All stickers may be purchased at the clerk's office. And this is a reference to the $5 discount if they're mailed, if they're either done online or... I'm sorry, this is just, the $5 discount is the same discount that's offered for the full sticker. So all stickers may be purchased at the clerk's office, the town office, Monday through Friday. Stickers when purchased by mail or online will receive a discount of $5. Said sticker will expire on March 31st of each year and the fee to replace any sticker is $5. That same language is used for the full disposal sticker. No stickers will be issued free, so no free stickers will be issued. I included that because I wanted to make sure that you knew that that was in our rules and regulations. And no change was made to that. No changes is being requested to be made for that. All waste must originate in the town of Yarmouth except for chargeable debris, which is how, commercial debris, which is exactly how it was written before. And notice the addition of the words, "All waste must originate in the town of Yarmouth" unless non-resident sticker is purchased, except for chargeable debris with the word "commercial" whited out or marked out. That change is referencing the non-resident stickers that are sold for either disposal or recycle only. And just clarifying this, a lot of this is just clarification to make it easier for people to understand. And then the last one, "All trucks weighing over 10,000 pounds G V W that will use scales to drop off chargeable materials must be lettered and numbered." Again, we're just clarifying so that people who purchase stickers understand what we're asking of them and so that they understand the regulations.
But this is a sticker regulations. Do trucks over 10,000 gross vehicle weight have disposal stickers?
They may not necessarily have disposal stickers, but they do come into the disposal area and they drop at the C and D pad. So they need to understand that this is a regulation for them as well. So it's just, it gives the ability for our staff to say to them, "You must have a lettered vehicle if you're coming in."
You should section two that then, as other disposal area regulations because it's under sticker regulations and that's...
You're correct, Tracy. Thank you. I apologize. I didn't outline that correctly. You're right. I believe it is in a different section, so I think I didn't, I didn't use that number correctly. You're right. Thank you. So as we move on, we can talk a little bit about some of the residency requirements or the residency regulations. So this is where we get into a resident and who is allowed to purchase stickers. So residents' permanent address in Yarmouth, yes, they're allowed to purchase stickers. Residential taxpayers pays taxes on a residential property, yes, they're allowed to purchase stickers. Taxpayer, taxpayer owner of commercial property in Yarmouth, no, they're not allowed to purchase stickers. Other taxpayers pays tax on a residential parcel of land which there is no dwelling, but a dwelling could legally be built, no. They're not allowed to purchase stickers as residents. Family corporations or trusts, maximum of four stickers passes awarded to corporation officers, trustees, yes. Limit of four per property.
I have a question on that. Would that be four separate stickers or four separate fees? Or how would that work?
Four separate stickers and a yes, each sticker is per.
Okay.
Price per. So, and then the last one is individuals connected to a Yarmouth resident taxpayer, someone who documents a shared address with a Yarmouth taxpayer. For example, they live together off Cape. One of them owns a second home in Yarmouth. The answer is yes, they are allowed to purchase a sticker. So to wrap up, thank you for your time this evening. After reviewing the analysis and hearing the recommendations from the recycling advisory committee, are there any questions we can answer that might help you decide which option might be best on the topic of recycling-only stickers and the policy language that was recommended?
So can I just ask another follow-up to Mike's question about the four per property? Because our, the policy says 162 includes household and recycling for the first sticker. For household, the second sticker per household shall have a fee of $81. So that's, so in the case of the family trust, do they pay the 81 for the second, third, and fourth? Or do they pay the full amount for all, just out of curiosity?
According to the residency eligibility at a glance, family corporations, maximum of four stickers passes awarded to corporations. So when we move over to the disposal, yes, limit four per property.
Okay, but I'm asking, do they pay full price for all of them? Or is it per household, the second sticker?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Is it a full price for each one of them? That's a great question. I'd have to defer to our finance director on that one. And he's at the podium.
First sticker is full price, second sticker is half price, third sticker is full price, fourth sticker is half price.
None of the above, okay.
There's a limit of four stickers.
So two full, two half, if they were to get four.
That's correct.
I have another question on the trustee part of it.
Thank you, Ed. Don't go anywhere.
In a trust, the trustee is the legal title holder to property, but the real equitable owners are the beneficiaries of the trust who are not mentioned. So for example, suppose I had a property where I'm the trustee for the benefit of my two daughters. And let's say they live in the property and that's not an uncommon situation. So unless this is amended to reflect that beneficiaries of a trust are also eligible for a sticker, I'd be the only one that could get the sticker, and yet I'm not living there.
But they could prove their residency.
So maximum of four stickers awarded to the corporation officers or trustees.
Trustees of a trust would be me in that case. The beneficiaries are the ones that really own the...
They're not eligible.
They're not.
That isn't what it says.
That's what I'm saying. And I don't think that makes a lot of sense. I'll give you an example. I have, I had a client who I was the trustee for. And she died. And the trust said that upon her death, the property would be held in trust for her son and daughter. The son bought the daughter out and now... The son bought the daughter out, and now he and his family live there, full-time, 100% with their children. But I'm still the trustee of the trust, but I'm just a technical title holder. I really don't have anything to do with the property. They would need my signature to sell it.
Well, yeah, did they complain to you about their trash?
Do you want a disposal sticker?
I think they're getting, I think they're getting stickers and beat stickers, and I think everything's going fine with them. I don't think there's any problems, but what I'm saying is, they, they're the beneficiaries, they're the real owners of the property. So I think probably this should say trustee and/or beneficiary to get the sticker.
Who pays the tax?
The real estate tax bills are paid by the beneficiaries, although they're technically invoiced to me care of them. But I don't, I don't pay them.
I have a question about the numbers here. I'm still lost in what is a net loss. A net loss says to me that there's revenue associated with this operation. Can you explain how we're getting to a net loss, then? What revenue is being assigned to recycling?
So we do get rebates for items that are turned in that do have value. For example, newspapers have a value. And you'll notice that next to newspapers, there's parentheses, and $45. Excuse me, sorry, there's no parentheses, next to newspapers, $70. So we're, the town of Yarmouth is receiving $70 right now for, per ton, for newspapers. For metal, we are currently receiving $145 per ton. For corrugated cardboard, we're receiving $45, but we're also paying for mixed paper, $45 a ton. And commingled, which is your plastic glass and tin, is $90 a ton.
So we're paying for mixed paper?
Yes.
And, okay, why wouldn't we just throw it in the trash, then?
Because trash is $76.38 per ton.
All right. And how about commingled, since that's 90 bucks?
If commingled were thrown into the trash, we would be fined up to $400 per ton from Covanta and CMAS because they refuse to take our commingled. It is against their policy. They signed an agreement with DEP not to accept our commingled.
How is, how do they distinguish that from what's already in the trash and thrown away by people?
Because if we were to dump a load of commingled up on the pad at the transfer station in the town of Yarmouth, it would be very obvious, and the staff at that facility are required to do audits.
Top it off with some regular trash, I guess, I don't know.
We are required, they're required to do audits on a regular basis of what gets dumped by not only the commercial haulers, but it's the Yarmouth haulers as well.
I get it.
Again, these are, these are state regulations that ban these products from trash, so we have to follow the regulations.
All right, so we're paying 90 bucks a ton for commingled trash, and...
Commingled recycled.
What's that?
Commingled recycling.
Yes. Well, so it is. And, okay. All right, so that's a loss just from the, that is the revenue stream, which in fact is not a revenue stream, is causing us money to dispose of the items. Okay, that's clear, then.
But I think what she's saying, it's in mitigation of the fee that you'd pay for the regular trash.
Understand, yeah, okay. I'm still, I'd like to look at things holistically, and...
Give me your trash.
Yeah, that's it. And I guess, I have a feeling we could eliminate a lot of, I don't know, maybe we couldn't eliminate the cost, but it seems to me that trying to track down people that come into the facility and make sure that they're only using recycling based on the color of their sticker, and, you know, running around, it just seems to me to be a false economy. You know, I guess my preference would be to simplify things and just say, "We have one sticker." And, you know, either you got it or you don't. And if you don't have a sticker, get out of here. You know, it just, to think that we're trailing people around and saying, "Oh geez, you went to the trash bin, you didn't go straight to recycling." Unless we've got some other mechanism that's a, an automated tracking device or something of that nature, or we change the setup of the whole operation, I just don't think, I think that we're just fooling ourselves. And the people that are, you know, again, you've got so many people using the regular trash disposal and not paying attention to what they're throwing in.
May I comment on that?
Yeah.
I don't think that by having a non-resident sticker that we're going to be getting a lot more people that are going to be coming in. I think what we're trying to do is to get the people that are coming in and paying, and dropping their recycling for free to actually carry part of the responsibility. And I know that there are people that come here faithfully, that just, they want to do the right thing, they have their trash picked up, but they don't want to pay the extra, which would be a lot more if the service that is picking up their trash would cost. And so I think that the people that, we're not going to get a lot of, people are coming in already and just saying, "We're going to recycle," and that's being managed properly. I don't think there are a lot of people that are coming in and saying they're doing that and going and dumping their trash, and then, so I don't think you're going to see a big difference in that. And I can understand what you're suggesting about maybe we don't want to offer a non-resident recycling sticker only, but I think by offering one for the residents, we're going to be able to get them to carry some of the load and understand that it costs us money.
I agree, I make a motion that we adopt option B, a resident-only sticker at the rate of $30, and also to amend the disposal regulations to reflect that only, meaning striking the non-resident commercial sticker part, and that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Nay.
So it doesn't...
It does not pass.
So is that, that's it? We move on?
So now they continue to, everybody continues to dump for free? That makes no sense.
Yeah, unless we have a different proposal. You know, I'd make a motion that we adopt option C.
Is anybody going to second that motion? I'm not.
Okay, that's fine. So I guess that's where we're stuck.
Well, that's unfortunate. Is there any common ground mark? Anything that you can...
I support, I believe your recommendation is option A, is that correct? I know you've laid out three options.
We laid out three.
So you're going to make a motion on A?
What's that?
You're going to make a motion on A?
I don't think it's going to pass, but I support option A because denying non-residents the opportunity to recycle here, I think, can create a problem.
But that's at the, on the backs of our taxpayers.
Well, if you look at the, if you look at the waste that we're trying to capture, in the area of the waste, motor oil, antifreeze, the kinds of things that we don't want improperly disposed.
I agree.
We're on a sole-source aquifer, pollution is incredibly expensive. The idea that we would refuse to take these items at our facility or any other facility, I believe, is just totally inappropriate. So I support option A. That's just me.
So you'll make a motion?
I move to support option A.
Who is the non-resident, again, in this?
Like somebody from Brewster, where they could go to Brewster and dispose of it.
Or Dennis, or Barnstable.
Or Barnstable and dispose of it.
But all, but all the other towns, all the other towns, though, are developing their own systems very similar to this.
Okay.
All right? I'm hearing tonight and today's hearing, Barnstable's doing something, Dennis is doing something, and we have a host of other communities doing something similar. So if you have the option to go to Brewster, you're going to end up with the same situation as opposed to any other town. Again, I just look at one sole-source aquifer, the last thing I want is to adopt a policy that might facilitate the dumping of motor oil, antifreeze, mercury, and other kinds of contaminants into the environment. I think the only responsible approach in dealing with this is option A, so that's why I support it.
Is that a motion?
I did make that motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
One, again, using, using an example, somebody in Brewster. What does Brewster charge right now?
I believe they charge $60, but it's an annual sticker, and it's pay-as-you-throw.
And do they allow non-residents?
I don't know, I can check and track.
You should know.
I don't know the answer to that question.
But, but the point is, is each town should be responsible, and that is our regulation, is that we're responsible for the refuse that's created and generated in our town. And that's what our responsibility is for, is our taxpayers in our town. And while I agree with what you're saying, Mark, and it would be horrific if somebody didn't want to drive from Brewster or Dennis to put their thermometer in a trash can, but I'm sorry, they have the responsibility to do the right thing by their residents, and I can't, in my right mind, have our taxpayers pay for, and our stickers are all going to go up based on the fact that it's costing us more money to recycle other people's stuff? It's just not responsible in that regard either.
We just, we just totally disagree.
Yeah.
The other towns are doing something similar to this. We're all going to be pretty much in a uniform set of fees. I don't see this as a huge issue. I think protecting the environment deserves a priority.
It's a good point.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, Mike, what was your comment?
I was wondering if anyone had any, this is a public hearing, isn't it, or not?
Yes.
Is anyone, I wondered if anyone in the public had any input.
I don't know if we're finished with board input yet.
We voted already once.
Yeah, we already voted.
There is a motion and a second from Mr. Forrest's motion.
Okay. I don't love Mark's motion, but I think it's better than nothing, and I still think option B would be the better option, but I think option A is better than nothing.
One of the problems I have with A is the fact that it's going to be probably twice as much work for staff monitoring that many more stickers of what they're doing. You know, if non-residents are getting just the disposal sticker to say, who's to say they're going, you know, our staff is going to be monitoring whether or not they're dumping refuse. So that's...
You see a problem there?
I see the recycle sticker being monitored by the recycle, or the sticker reader in the future, and it will create a different tone, and it'll allow that gate attendant to radio ahead that the person who's coming in has a sticker, and that they are a recycle-only sticker. Whether they are a resident or a non-resident isn't really going to matter to staff on the other side. They have a recycling-only sticker, and that will be acceptable, and they will be allowed to go to the recycling center.
So you won't have to distinguish those two?
They won't know, but no, they won't know, but there'll be probably more stickers for them.
It won't matter because they've already paid their fees, and they just get the same sticker that will give the same signal.
Correct, it'll just cost, it'll just cost more.
That's the only difference.
So, so the, I'm still trying to picture these people. You know, let's say I live in a condominium, and my trash is picked up. We've got a lot of, a lot of people like that in town. My trash is picked up, but they won't pick up recycles. So right now, I can come and turn in the recyclables if I wish to do that, right?
Yes, for free.
You're going to charge me 30 bucks? You know where it's going to end up?
In the trash.
In the trash.
Probably, but not always. And we've heard from some people, we've surveyed them, and there are people out there who say, "Absolutely, I will pay, because it is important to them."
For those three people, we're going to get 90 bucks, you know? Just, you know, I think we're creating complexity, and, you know, I just, I don't believe in...
If you go with the full sticker price, Norm, you might find this stuff in other places other than the landfill.
I agree.
That's the problem.
And I don't, certainly don't want to see that.
Well, we will find it that way, because there's going to be another bunch of people that say, you know, they'll figure it out, they'll figure out a system. But, you know, I just, I think we're creating an incredibly complex system that is, at best, poorly monitored at this point.
So I guess we need you, Tracy, to protect the environment.
Are you going to go to the public?
Neither Barnstable nor Brewster allow non-residents. That's just been brought to my attention.
Okay, so all their non-residents, if they want to dispose of something, come here, then?
That's happened, yes.
Right.
So we're going to save the world.
All right, is there anyone from the public that wishes to make a comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion with regard to acceptance of option A. Those in favor?
Wait a minute. When does this have to be set by? I mean, I know they're doing it now for nothing, but can we, can we revisit when Eric's here? At another time, or? I don't know what he would do.
He can reopen the hearing.
No. No, but can we set another?
You'd have to continue the hearing.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think...
Well, you're not going to take any more testimony, right? So, yeah, so we could just not take the vote.
I mean, I'm willing to do it.
Do it another night, but you wouldn't be able to take any more public comment.
But I don't think it's the, I don't think it's the right answer. I don't think it's, it's better than nothing, I'm going to give you that. It's not what I want for, for our town.
We'll give you some input. We have to change our software system, our online software system, and we also have to order stickers, recycling stickers, if you choose to go in that direction, so that we have it in time so that we can start doing the renewal, renewal cycle. So we're going to have a meeting with the software vendor tomorrow, or, actually, Thursday, and we can give you some input into what our deadline would be.
You know, I just can't support, I just can't support non-resident stumping here, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So you could have a motion to close the hearing, don't take any more information, and then you can, yeah, and then deliberate amongst yourself at another meeting.
Okay, I will move to close the public portion of the hearing and to continue the matter further for a vote.
You need to withdraw your motion on there.
Then, if we're going to do that, do I have to withdraw my motion?
Well, so do you have a live motion on the floor? That's been seconded by Mr. Stone.
Yeah, and let me do this, let me just withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw the second.
And then we'll deal with the second.
And then I'll make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing and to continue the matter for, at a future time for a vote.
Okay.
I don't know if we have to have a date certain on that.
Well, we don't have to have a date certain, but I, it would be, do we, so I have to know that we're going to have five people, you know, so, five members, so...
Okay, so we'll work it around Eric's schedule then.
Sorry, your work was great work, great presentation.
His motion needs a second.
Okay, you guys talk.
Yeah, it needs a second, right.
I second my motion.
Okay. Did you second, Mark?
Mark seconded it.
Okay.
All those in favor of...
Further, further discussion?
For, just to continue this?
Right. Close the public portion and continue it for a vote.
Presentation.
Okay, those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose?
It's not here.
Okay.
The sooner the better on that, though, so that...
Thank you very much for all your hard work, it's appreciated.
I didn't know that.
Okay, what's next?
We're having a technical difficulty here.
All right, we're moving on to...
So are we. I, we have a PowerPoint presentation that I had sent to your assistant, I believe.
We have it in our...
Oh, good. But I, I guess, I, public's not going to be able to see it, because I was supposed to bring it on a memory stick, and I did not. I apologize.
It's part of our packet, if they want to put that up.
Shall I hold it up in front of the camera?
Oh, they can't.
I apologize. I thought it was going to be delivered, but that didn't happen. Are you finagling something, Roby?
Yes.
Yay.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Carol Ewing, and this is Jill Talladay. We're co-chairs of the Yarmouth Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and we're here tonight to give you an update on what we've been doing and what we're looking forward to doing in the next year. First, I'd like to introduce our committee members, some of whom are here, Charlie Spooner and Mary Vilbin are members who've been on the committee for several years, Charlie, many years, thank you, Charlie. And we have two new members this year, Deb Stetson and Abigail Santos, and Abby is here, right here. And so is... So that leaves four, including us, that's six people on the committee. We've lost two people this year and have resigned from the committee. Jill's going to mention that.
Yeah, so we wanted to thank Frank Martinez, who has been on the committee for many years, contributed a lot, and we were sorry that he resigned this year. Also, Adam Joy, who wasn't on the part of RASWAC that long, but he's a Yarmouth resident and he works for DPW in Dennis, so he contributed a lot from the knowledge that he brought from his work. So we thank them both for their service, and we just want to make sure that the public knows that we have one vacancy. So if there's anyone that's interested, we hope that they'll step up and apply.
This year, 2018, we've been focusing on two areas. First is education, about two things, informing the public about the whole recycling situation worldwide and the effects it's had on our own disposal area. We have done that outreach about, through talks at the senior center, we've actually met there twice. Roby has done some wonderful talks at the library and attracted more and more people each time. Jill and I have met with environmental clubs at the high school and at the middle school, and we've also talked to businesses. This is specifically in relation to the plastic bag ban that took effect this year. Also, reaching out, we've used newspaper articles, primarily about the bag ban, but also focus on the recycling situation worldwide and what is, what's happening in here and in Dennis. I think both those, it was in the register, so both those disposal areas were highlighted. We set about creating, with the help of Mary and the Chamber of Commerce, a branding for our Yarmouth Bags It campaign to try and educate folks to bring their own bags, now that plastic bags are no longer allowed. Paper bags are not the best solution, which is what's being handed out at most markets now. We're hoping people will heed the call and do the responsible thing and bring their own reusable bags. We created with this a brochure that was handed out through the Health Department, and we've also done educational talks on what the bag ban is about. So that was mainly our informational push, educational. As well, we've been exploring ways that we can reduce the costs of recycling and solid waste disposal. That's our primary purpose, is to advise the disposal area and the selectmen about ways we can actually reduce cost and be fiscally prudent. One of those is the recycling-only sticker, which I think has probably been discussed enough already, so I won't say anymore. We also supported, and this is something I'm pretty proud of, the fact that the DEP has awarded us, us being the disposal area, Roby is responsible really for this, because recycling has met a higher standard. It comes in a point system, and our points went up, and that qualified us for a grant, which we get, received $10,000 to improve our recycling, and I think Jill's going to talk more about that later. It's called the Recycling IQ Project, and Roby's already started. I don't know if you've been to the disposal area recently, there are new signage, signage is up there, that's part of that, but there's other aspects to it. We responded to lots of concerns from this committee and just plain folks about NIPS. Randy Hunt in the legislature tried to get a bill through to add NIPS to the returnable bottle list. Unfortunately, that was not voted on this, it was voted down, this legislative cycle, but I believe it will be brought up again. We wrote a letter in support of his efforts. And we also, along with a lot of other folks, participated in the Town Cleanup Day. We actually had a booth about the plastic bag ban there to help people become familiar with that, those who were helping out. So really, we're looking to help people understand what's happening with recycling now and finding ways that we can actually lower the amount of recycling and solid waste that goes into our system. So, thank you.
So, moving on to our goals for this year, we really want to increase and continue, we've, I think we've done a fair amount of communication to the community, but we want to continue to do that, to make sure that they understand the benefits of recycling and how the, how the changing markets and what's happening. One of the ways that we're going to be doing that is we've been invited to provide a column in the register. So we're working with them to determine how often, how frequently that would be, what we could incorporate it, but ways to inform, maybe incentivize the community to get more involved, but to let them know what's happening with recycling and solid waste and the changes that continue to take place. We want to continue to meet with the business community to make sure that they understand the bag ban and ask if there are any questions. And even this morning, as a matter of fact, we had a workshop at the Hampton Inn, and there were several businesses that were there, including Shaw's Supermarket, and so it gave us a chance to make a presentation and answer questions, and we hope to continue to do more of that. We want to continue to reach out further to the schools, encourage them to do more recycling and to reduce their waste stream. We've discovered that there is a lot of polystyrene that is used on a daily basis, plastic silverware, all that goes into the trash. And the polystyrene ban has been passed in Dennis, which means that the Dennis schools are included in that, so we'd like to see, see if we can work that into Yarmouth as well. And we're going to be working with Roby on implementation of the Recycling IQ, the grant that was received. As Carol mentioned, there's already new signage, so part of that includes signage and having staffing that makes sure that people know where things are going into the right bin, and again, to understanding, to reduce contamination, so that as many things that can be recycled and that provide funding to us happen. We'll continue to monitor the recycling markets so that, again, we can make any advice or just be aware and let the community know what's changed and why we need to, things need to change at the, at the recycling area. And then we also really want, as far as another way to let the community know what's going on, is to really work with the website and to make it more user-friendly, provide more content. Right now, it's, it's a little bit hard to find things, so we want to make sure that that's, information's more accessible. So Carol and I are going to be training on how to be able to do some of that ourselves. And we're going to review and evaluate options to reduce the amounts of, amount and cost of recycling. Our goal is really to try to encourage reducing waste overall, because as we know that it costs a lot to get rid of it. We are planning to review, investigate, or do more research on polystyrene. I think most people know that it's a bad thing for our, for health, and if the, if polystyrene is being used in the schools and used in, for a lot of food containers, we want to investigate, are there ways, you know, do we propose a ban on polystyrene? Or, you know, what can we do? So we want to do more research on that. And then the whole, the pay-as-you-throw, I, we know that there was a pay-as-you-throw proposal a couple of years ago, but as Roby explained, we actually are offering a type of pay-as-you-throw with the daily charge that someone could come in and pay in the coupon book. So if we can educate people about that and possibly expand on the existing coupon book program, that might reduce some of the, of the waste, and encourage people to come in and use that. So we, you know, again, in conclusion, I guess, just more outreach to make sure that the community is knowing how they can get involved, what's changing in the markets, and what they can do to help reduce the costs that, that waste is providing to us. And we can't say enough, the, what we see in the work that Roby and her staff are doing, you know, anytime that we go to the landfill, the, they're very helpful, the signage, she's doing a great job.
If, if none of you have been to one of her presentations, she's a great cheerleader. She really makes you want to recycle. So we appreciate her presence and all that she does.
Thank you, Freddie.
You have any questions?
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to the board for comments and...
Thank you for all your hard work.
I too would like to thank you for your work and for your excellent presentation. I like the fact of the diversity and the educational component of your messaging to the public and to schools. I think a lot can be done with the schools in particular, because when kids come home and they advocate that those kinds of practices, environmentally clean practices, I think parents have a tendency to get infected by it sometimes. And also, there's projects and things that they can do within the schools. I know, my wife was a science teacher for many, many years in Barnstable. I know that the environmental issues were always a major part of the curriculum, and the kids were always doing things to preserve the environment, protect it, enhance it, and things of that nature. So I think I'm very happy to see that your outreach goes down to that level as well. So again, thank you very much for all your, your hard work and your dedication.
Mark?
Amen. No, really, thank you. You do, you spend a lot of time on this, you do a lot of work. I'm impressed at the amount of energy that you can give to a topic like this, and obviously you came very well-prepared tonight, so thanks for all your help, all your support, all your hard work.
Thank you.
I can only echo the comments that the rest of the board has made. I, you know, I got back about a week or so ago from France, and I posted, while I was there, about the cleanliness of the cities in France. And there were, the streets were immaculate, and trash, there wasn't any trash along the roads. And I've talked to some people here about it, and I said, I don't understand, you know, what's the difference? Is it a, is it a societal thing, the norms of the society that are different here compared to, you know, some of the European areas? And, you know, some people say, well, they pay huge taxes. Well, I don't buy that, because it takes just as much effort to pick up the trash the first time as it does two months from now, you know? And another thing that I noticed was, you walk around the plazas in, for example, in Nice, and huge public plazas along, along the water, and I had a tissue that I wanted to dispose of. I looked forever to find a trash disposal bin. There was, I had to take it back with me to the room.
That's interesting.
Carrying, carrying.
But there was no trash in the public areas. So people are accustomed to, you know, dealing with things differently. It's a cultural...
Taking responsibility.
That's right.
That's what it is.
And so, you know, the more we can encourage changes in thinking and responsibility to the environment, and you're doing a great job with that, and I think, you know, we're all very appreciative, so.
Just pride in the place around you.
That's right.
I mean, they're proud of where they are, and they wouldn't do that to their own town. It's amazing to me that people would just throw something out the window.
Exactly right. So, our sympathies for the frustration you experienced in the presentation tonight. We'll get, we'll get to a final result, and, believe me, we're, we all want to do something about this issue, so.
I'll bring music next time.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the Cape Light Compact Three-Year Plan presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm the town rep, Joyce Flynn. I'm proud to introduce Maggie Downey, who's our executive administrator of the Cape Light Compact, and Margaret Song. She heads our Energy Efficiency Program for the public and commercial sectors, and I ask that you give them all the hard questions, because this is a new program, very technical, so I am still learning. You going to join us?
Sure. Thanks. So, thank you, Joyce. Thank you for that introduction. As I said, I'm Maggie Downey, and it is, and Margaret are booting up the presentation. I know you have a copy of it in your packet. I'd like, I'm going to go through the slides, some of the intro slides and background quickly so we can focus on the enhancements, and then hopefully have a good dialogue and discussion this evening. So, why am I here? The Cape Light Compact, as you may know, is administers on the Energy Efficiency Programs on the Cape and Vineyard in partnership with all 21 towns. The Cape Light Compact is the 21 towns. We organized last year as a joint powers entity under the Massachusetts Municipal Modernization Act as a way to improve accountability, fiscal accountability, and transparency, and also address some of the liability issues that were, that were unknowns under being in a governmental agreement. So we are here to talk about the fourth, I can't, fourth three-year plan filing that we are required to do under Massachusetts Green Communities Act on October 31st. So the compact has been working... Oops, sorry. Thanks. Let me do that for you.
All right. Let me try. It's not working.
So, Margaret, if you want to just, when it moves, just go to the background on the three-year Energy Efficiency Plan. So the Cape Light Compact, prior to the passage of the Green Communities Act in 2008, filed annual energy efficiency plan. The Massachusetts Legislature passed the Green Communities Act in 2008 and required municipal aggregators, Cape Light Compact, and the, in the investor-owned utilities to file three-year plans that, and I put the language right up there, because we actually have a state mandate to pursue all electric and natural gas resources being met through all available energy efficiency and demand reduction resources that are cost-effective and less expensive than supply. So basically, what does that sentence mean? The legislature has done the analysis, energy efficiency... The legislature has done the analysis, energy efficiency is more cost-effective, it's cheaper to conserve energy, to reduce your overall energy consumption for either electricity or gas than to build new power plants, infra, substations, and gas and electric infrastructure. So the mandate that we're charged with as we put together our plan is to provide all cost-effective measures, whether it's changing lighting or motors, as well as doing home energy audits and providing insulation. And we've been doing that, as I said, we filed three three-year plans. This summer, the legislature changed, made some significant changes to the Green Communities Act that are reshaping the 19 to 21 Energy Efficiency Plan. And I want to touch on them briefly. There are four of them. The first is that the Green Community Act's update explicitly allows for cost-effective energy storage and other active demand management technologies to be included in the Energy Efficiency Plan. It also added something known as cost-effective strategic electrification. The legislature, I know it's a mouthful, the legislature has determined that in order to meet the state's Global Warming Solutions Act goals, that they are going to move and are charging us with moving customers off of oil or propane, that heat with fossil fuels to electrify the grid. They are pursuing, as you know, offshore wind contracts, hydro contracts from Canada to bring in electric generation that is from renewable resources, and that is called strategic electrification. So moving those customers, that heat with a fossil fuel onto a cold climate heat pump or a wood pellet, installing, the next piece is explicitly allowing renewable energy, so PV, small-scale PV on homes and businesses to be funded with energy efficiency funds. It also changed the cost-effectiveness test, which is the threshold that the Department of Public Utilities will run all of our programs through when they're reviewing this starting November 1st, when we submit our plans the day, the day before. They even changed the name in the legislature, and these are no longer statewide electric efficiency plans, they are statewide electric energy plans. So they have turned, given us a different direction. When we met the Cape Light Compact, when staff met with representatives from DOR and the Attorney General's Office, it was very clear that the direction to us, as well as the utilities, is that they are expecting the 19 to 21 plans to incorporate, incorporate these recent changes in the law. So I'm going to skip over the calendar events because I can wrap that up. And our programs, I'd like to hope everybody's familiar with the three programs. We offer energy efficiency services to residential, income-eligible, as well as commercial and industrial programs. And again, just to remind everybody, all, we pay every month on our electric bill to fund all of these programs. So these are truly ratepayer design and programs, and that's why we're here tonight. We held a series of stakeholder meetings to help us get here over the last, from starting last year into early 2018, to find out what are we doing that's working, what are we doing that's not working, how can we improve, and are there things that you'd like to see us do that we're not? And that's really what's shaped the CLC-specific program enhancements that I'm going to talk about next. So the board, in the next plan, the Cape Light Compact is going to continue to provide a year-round tenant initiative for businesses and residential electric customers who pay their bill. They'll have 100% residents, 100% eligibility for incentives for air sealing and insulation with, with no cap. We will also continue to serve customers with natural gas heated homes who prefer to be served by the compact. So the compact serves fuel-neutral, everybody has an electric account, so if you wish to participate in the compact's programs, energy efficiency programs, you can be served by the compact. We will also continue to do income verification locally to make sure that those customers that are income-eligible were very sensitive to customers who may be eligible for higher incentives, but aren't participating in traditional income-eligible programs such as food stamps or on fuel assistance, but yet they're eligible for richer incentives. So we have, we do that locally in Yarmouth, right around the corner, and that's not something that is not done anywhere else. And it was, it's a barrier that we've been able to overcome by helping customers participate more readily into income-eligible programs. We will, the board is also considering a behavioral program, which is a paper report that is sent to, would be included in your, we get it in the mail, and it would benchmark how you're using your electricity and energy to your neighbors. This is a little bit of, say a little, it's a very controversial and hot-topic conversation at the board because of the high percentage of second homes. And people get, some people get them now that have a naturally gas-heated home and they're being compared to homes where there's nobody in year-round. So the board is, will be discussing this and voting as to whether or not they want to pursue a paper report at our upcoming October, October meeting. The largest and the biggest thing that we're, that will be offered, or proposed to be offered is something called, as we talked about, strategic electrification. And what the compact is proposing is a demonstration offering. We would like to take the four things that the legislature has asked us to include in our plan and do a small 700 residential customer, customer demonstration offering to see how it will work and how it can be implemented. So we propose to focus on 700 non-natural gas-heated homes and offer tiered services. What I mean by that is the incentives would be tiered based on income levels. 60% of the state median income will be eligible for 100% incentives, just like they are now. And then we would have, we're focusing on our moderate, which are 61 to 80, and then the extended moderate of 81 to 120. And then there'll be, again, different levels of incentives based on income eligibility. And what will we be proposing for those customers, that are a good fit, who are oil or propane or electric resistance, to convert them where it works? So again, it's not just, it's not going to be one-size-fits-all to convert them to cold climate heat pumps coupled with PV because you are electrifying the grid and especially for the population that is income-eligible and moderate income, adding a higher electric bill does not, you know, defeats the purpose. So you want to add that ability to generate your own electricity while you electrify the grid. We're also providing battery storage, residential battery storage, to help during times of outages, and they will also be required to participate in our demand response program because the battery storage will be, allow us to be responding during peak demand events. Remember, we have to build out our grid to meet that maximum usage over the summer. So the goal to help all repairs lower, is to lower that peak, and we're proposing to do that through residential battery storage. It also has an added benefit of resiliency. Right now, if you have a solar on your home and the event of, when the grid goes down, your solar goes down because they take it off. When you put in and pair it with a battery, you're able to isolate an island out your home. So you will have some limited ability to run your appliances and you can target certain critical infrastructure. We're also looking at, as I said, some enhanced residential demonstrations, smart appliances, Wi-Fi thermostats, and plug load controls in order to help, in addition to battery, to shift consumer load. The residential, I mean, excuse me, the CNI program enhancements, the five or six bullets that are here are a continuation of what we're offering right now, which is to have municipalities be eligible for up to 100% of all cost-effective incentives, to continue to offer thermal measures, and what I mean like that by that for commercial customers would be air sealing or insulation, as well as having small businesses be eligible for up to 100% incentives and zero interest financing for implementing those more expensive energy efficiency measures. We're also going to continue our nonprofit offering, where there are certain nonprofits that meet specific criteria that have been developed by the board would be eligible for up to 100% incentives. And then the last one there is our Main Streets Initiative, which has been very successful in various towns on the Cape. This is the last slide on enhancements, and basically, we will also, in addition to the 700, where we're offering all three, battery, heat pumps, and storage, we will also be exploring residential battery storage. We've proposed an additional 300 that don't have to have all three combination, but somebody might already have solar installed but not interested in moving forward with the other technologies. And we are looking to explore that for small commercial as well. And we're also looking to partner and help the towns and businesses to develop electric vehicle charging stations where appropriate and can be sited readily within each of the municipalities. I know I went through an awful lot of information fast, but I thought it would be better to do that and save time for some questions, but I did want to just point out that we are looking for feedback. There's a survey up there, there's about 15 questions. It's the second bullet from the bottom. If you click on that link, it would be great if anyone has the time to fill out the survey. Again, the information that we've received over the last year while we've been developing the plan and what we hear from the community now helps shape and influence how these dollars are spent. Questions?
Questions from the board?
Well, having these two by your side, they are amazing and can probably tell you a lot about what we're doing in our local community, and I guess it looks like it's pretty much in line with some of the steps that we just took. A lot of the similarities, we just talked about, charging stations and things like that to meet, to meet our requirements as well, so. I don't know what the Main Streets Initiative entails or if Yarmouth has taken advantage of that at all. I'd be interested in hearing specifically.
That's Margaret's fairly weak, so I'll let you.
Yeah, so this past summer, what we did was for any customer that was under 60,000 KWH, which actually had a high incidence in Yarmouth, we offered up to 100%. So basically, if you needed lighting, you needed changing out of faucet aerators, thermostats, you know, that kind of thing, we went in and it was basically, the idea was that if we could get all of the businesses audited all at once, that we could purchase all of those things in bulk and then that way be able to provide them at no cost.
Great. I wish you the best of luck on this. I think this is great. I've been following the benefits that have been provided through the program for many years. Much of it was directed at gas use, and I'm an oil user, so there hasn't been a whole bunch out there for us in terms of rebates, so I'm interested to see what the next step holds in that trans, you know, how that transpires because I think it's interesting that you want to electrify when we're trying to reduce electricity, so it's, there's a lot of pieces of it and, and, you know, we as a town have taken advantage of so many energy reduction options, yet our electric bill continues to rise. So that's, that's interesting. Here we are. I appreciate all your work.
Mark? Again, it's, I feel like you're like a staffer here in Yarmouth. You're here all the time and you do a great job. So, and Maggie's your boss, right?
She is.
So Maggie, she's doing a great job. Thanks for letting us take full advantage of her expertise. She's been wonderful here. You were looking for us as a board to support this? Excuse me? That's in the next topic. So in terms of just this update, is there anything, any big takeaway or anything that you need from us?
I do want to just bring, remind everybody that we do, we pay for these programs ourselves. The impact, just an example, Mark, and that's really why we're here. I mean, these are, it's a lot of money that is, that the, we administer on behalf of ratepayers for residential customers. Over the next three-year plan, the impact will be about $10.59 each month to run these programs. And I think it's important that, that everybody's aware of that. The Cape Light Compact on our website, at our board meeting, we've gone through in great detail, so there's lots of information. So we're really here just to tell you what's going on and if you had questions, and we're more than happy at any time to come, you know, to do a deep dive on one of these topics.
Yeah, I think one of the things that, I picked this up from the last presentation is that they, as a committee, are actually taking an interest in trying to figure out ways that we can do a better job in educating our residents. And they were suggesting that they'd like to do more with our website. They would like to find better ways to help it, make it more accessible, and I, and I thought that was, that was a very nice idea, very nice suggestion. I think, I mean, our website needs significant improvement. If there are ways in which we can utilize online media to help get the word out, you may have some suggestions, you may have some ideas and ways we can better utilize what we have here in terms of our website, social media on your programs. I think that would be helpful. You know, the more we, we utilize multiple sources to get the word out, the better. I mean, obviously, what you're doing is fantastic and we need to spread the word.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Mike?
Thank you. On your summary of enhancements for CNI programs, you talk about municipalities, which are 7% of the total CNI customers, and you mentioned incentives of up to 100% for greater cost coverage with equipment, maintenance, training to ensure savings with board approval for projects over 150,000. Could you expound upon that and give me a better sense of what is available for municipalities under that particular category?
Sure. So actually, we work quite a bit with Rich, Ed, Robi, actually, I could probably name half the people in this room. And so what we'll do is we'll go through the building, we'll make an assessment, we'll make a recommendation, as long as that's something that the town wants to do, we would make sure that that's cost-effective. So basically, that it returns a dollar for every dollar that we're investing. And if it's true and it meets all of the other criteria, you could have it paid for at no cost, and no additional cost. I should say, though, that the ratepayers are paying for all of this. So, you know, if you have upgrades at the Septage Plant, as an example, they, you guys just recently did some lighting there, there was no additional cost to the town, but really what we're looking at and the reason why the board, and I shouldn't speak for you, but the board in the past has.
The hard stuff.
The board has always supported this because at the end of the day, if we're able to mitigate the costs that the town folks are paying with money, you know, that's paid for by the ratepayers, then that is, at the end of the day, a good investment. The $150,000, just so you know, that's a cost control, so anytime we have a project that is over $150,000, because it's an incredible amount of money, we do want to take that back to the board. They review the projects and then they approve them where, where applicable.
And could you tell me a little bit more too about the residential battery storage initiative and how that's going to work? Do you have to have solar before you can engage in that backup battery?
So there are two pieces to it. So we're proposing 1,000 as part of our demand response program. So the first key for all 1,000 residential customers is you would have to agree to participate in the Cape Light Compact's demand response program. What that means is, is you would allow us several times a year in the summer to call on that battery to put the electricity back into the grid. So that's a first criteria. That's how we're using it as a demand response offering. So for, we have 300 batteries that are not associated with the, the three-tiered services. So you should, right now, because we don't have any rates other than a flat rate, so there's no time-of-use rate, so if you had a battery without storage, you would be, it would be very expensive because you would be using the grid to charge it. So it's not a very cost-effective model and we, because we don't have any time-of-use rates, sometimes people have batteries and they charge them in the evening when the electricity is at its lowest cost. So we don't, we're not there yet. Those are all things that are being discussed at the, at the state level. So really, for this three-year plan, unless the regulations change, it would make the most sense if you had solar to get to participate in one of the batteries. Otherwise, you would be, it would be very expensive and not, that wouldn't meet the objectives.
Okay, so based on the state of the current technologies, it's most feasible to do it with solar?
Not so much the technology, but it's a cost item. You have to, it's, you're charging it with your, the electricity generated from your PV system as, which, you know, is a significantly less cents per kilowatt hour than if you were taking it off of the grid at a flat rate.
That's what I meant by that, and there's no available technologies to get around that or to.
There's no pricing, so we don't have that, that pricing tiers that would allow you, they do in other places, they have, Green Mountain Power in Vermont, that's the closest. I think some, some of the MLPs might also have off.
After like midnight, you'd get a lower rate. So some of the heavy-duty industrial customers, they know that going into it, so they do all their heavy electric use or water pumping after midnight, say, because they're, they're buying power at the lowest possible.
Right, or they're charging their batteries at night because they get a discount rate. We, we don't have that available to us.
Thanks.
All right, interesting work. I, you know, I had the question about electric, you know, conversion to electric kind of hit me because I, you know, back in the mid-'80s, it was going the other way and trying to get away from electric. And I, and I guess one of the basic questions that occurs to me, do we know what the reliability is of our grid on the Cape compared to the rest of Massachusetts? Because that's one, you know, it's one of the big complaint factors with, you know,
Is that's one, you know, is one of the big complaint factors with, you know, the, the grid goes down particularly during the winter. Long outages are a real problem. And I don't know if, if the Cape is different in that regard with, by comparison to the rest of Massachusetts. And it's a state that is, that is driving this. So, you know, if, if our grid is less reliable and we're marching to the same tune as the rest of the state, you know, it seems to me we need some support from the state to address the, the issues with the grid. But, you know, I hate to see us increase our reliance on a system that is, you know, questionable at times. And, you know, the response from our beloved utility, I won't even mention their name is, at times, you know, when we're, it could be during the course of a hurricane or windstorms or winter storms, we just seem to be out for such a long period of time.
And I think that's a part why some of the legislation, the amendments to the Green Communities Act were made, was recognizing that locally, that distributed energy resources, as it's developed, we are much more adept to respond locally on a smaller scale. There is going to be a very large battery project that's going down into Provincetown over the next several years. They just did significant upgrades, so it, but they are also recognizing the value of having battery storage paired with solar and the benefits that brings to the grid, the benefits it brings to, and to the homeowner or business owner as well.
Can I ask, can I ask Mr. Chairman?
But, but at the same time, if it's got to go over the, the electric wires and the poles are all laying flat on the ground, that doesn't do us a heck of a lot of good, whether it's battery storage or whatever methodology it is. If those poles are laying on the ground and the utility isn't getting there to put them upright, then, you know, we've, we've got a problem.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Related to the grid, can I just ask one quick question? Are you involved in this Provincetown battery storage project or is this being done independently?
If you remember, we called the Cape-by-Compact intervened in the ever-source rate case.
Yes.
And one of our board members is a selectman in Provincetown. So, we, we did, they did ask-
Tom Donigan, yes.
They did call, ask us to meet with them. They told us what they were proposing to do and that's about the extent of our official-
So, you've provided some technical assistance in that respect?
In communication.
I understand. While we're on the grid, there is, there was a plan by DPU, or at least a solicitation to get the utilities to come up with plans to modernize the grid, to improve the grid. Can you, while you brought up the grid question, I'm just anxious to know if there's any update on how that whole process is going.
It's still ongoing. In fact, it's funny you say that. We just, there, we are, this February, I think it's either January or February, we're required to submit a whole bunch of new filings, so, and there will be a technical session. So, they did not approve the, in its entirety, what was asked for, and so they sent it back to the drawing board. But those conversations are occurring throughout the fall and then will culminate in this January, in a tech session in the first quarter, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
We appreciate the, the update and the directions.
And don't you try to get Margaret as a full-time employee. Maggie will never let her go.
All right, we're to continue our focus on energy. We have the Energy Committee report coming up.
Yes, and we have five members here tonight, some others with conflicts, so just give us a minute to pull up chairs.
Certainly.
I'll be right back. You get him, Ellen?
Yep.
There you go. We're a committee of nine, so let me introduce you to the people we have here tonight. Steve Crinsman, Sandy Cashin, Joyce Flynn, Susan Starkey, and Bob Palmieri. Our engineers, Mike Duffy and Steve Gavin can't come tonight. And the presence of our educator, Regina Wood, will depend on how many questions parents ask at Medici's Parent Teacher Organization night, but she hopes to join us in a short period of time. Okay, well, it doesn't even seem that long ago that we were last here, but I'm sure you have spent many more hours in this room than we have since then. We, we are trying to be of help to the Board of Selectmen in the town in the ways that we can that are focused on energy. And this is what we were realizing, I mean, you've got a copy of our Paragraph Report in your packet, but we were starting to realize that really you could analyze our task as a three-part one, that we have an orientation to the Board of Selectmen, we have an orientation to the larger public, Yarmouth residents and businesses, and then we have an orientation toward the future, the future of the town and the people who may live and work here in the future. We've tried to think of how we could help achieve the Board of Selectmen objectives. We were delighted to see that on the Board of Selectmen Goals in 2019, the energy item moved up from item 10 to item 9. We, we were excited and we're, we're going for eight next year. Seven?
I don't want to burst a bubble. It could be number one, they're all important.
Oh, thank you. So, this isn't like order of preference. This is kind of balls in the air that come down.
Exactly.
Got it?
Reverse order.
We're not going to 12. Anyway, we, we've thought about this a lot and we've decided that where we can best help the Board of Selectmen are with Agenda Items One, expand economic growth, development, and redevelopment efforts to increase year-round employment, tourism, and quality of life. Of course, the energy article, improve energy quality and security for town residents by investigating alternative sustainable energy opportunities and work toward reducing energy consumption town-wide. And maybe with certain energy people's efforts, a little bit of seven about providing exceptional customer service, but I will let Bob speak to that later. So, here's how we're going to address our report. First, how we currently try to serve the Board of Selectmen. When we're oriented toward the Board of Selectmen, we try to advise on the best energy policy. We also provide research and answer individual questions for Board of Selectmen members. Some of you may remember being somewhat startled with the Green Communities Act where a question that you brought up at a discussion at which no energy members were even present floated in and answered, welcome or not, over the, over the email. We're always glad to assist you and we jump in when we think we might be of assistance, but we want to emphasize that we really would love you to ask us for things that might be helpful because we're always glad to oblige. So, the second part of our orientation is our orientation toward Yarmouth residents and businesses. For people who've been on the committee for a while, that would be Bob, myself, and Steve Gavin. We remember a time when Energy Committee mainly focused on town kilowatt hours and we did a good job and, you know, those kilowatt hours were watched and handled. But what we've come to discover is that we can do a much better job with that if at first we create more knowledge in the community, so they'll understand the policies that, that the town is trying to implement. So, I guess to talk about the second orientation and our larger mission of making information possible, we'll turn to our newest member, Susan Starkey, and ask her to comment on that. She hit the ground running when she joined. Mark, thank you for sending her to us and appointing her in your capacity as appointments chair.
Great. The methodologies, as you have seen us working with you in regards to how we do outreach with the residents and businesses, is through a number of different forms. We write letters to the editor, we present things to the Board of Selectmen, we do public education forums like we did at the high school for the green communities, we prepare FAQs like we did actually for town meeting. So, we feel like we've got a role to play to help educate both through these meetings and through all these other forums.
Okay, and at the same time, we have to go and be educated ourselves. Sandy?
An important piece of acting as an energy resource for Yarmouth-
Can you use the mic?
Oh, right. An important piece of acting as an energy resource for Yarmouth residents and businesses is keeping up on new policy at the state level and the unfolding of new technologies. I attended along with Joyce Flynn and Liz Aggo, the Department of Energy Resources for the Energy Storage Public Stakeholders Forum Session last May to collect information about the state's developing guidelines for battery storage. Energy Committee is focusing on storage issues over the next six months and I hope the new grant-funded battery for the Dennis Yarmouth High School Emergency Shelter will be delivered and operational very soon.
Okay, thank you. And Steve Crinsman is next to talk about-
The future.
-best in-person work with spreading information.
Yes, and it has to do with what's going to happen in the future, so I will be brief because we have no idea what's going to happen in the future. One very important thing that we did to contribute to helping the future is provide information on the Stretch Code and its relationship to the Green Communities Act. We had a public information session at the annual town meeting. We had a table and we talked to people as they came in. I'd like to think as a result of our efforts, the Green, the Stretch Code was passed and it is another component of the Green Communities Act, which, once this town completes, will enable us to get at the initial stage, a grant of approximately $180,000, which probably would help. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And I'd just like to say, when I watched Rich Bianveneux's presentation last week, I noticed that the amount of that initial grant had gone up, apparently because we have someone who knows how to maximize an application.
It has to go through the supercomputer up in Boston.
It's, it's what, 205,000?
No, it, it might be somewhere between 10180 and 208, something like that, so.
Okay, 208's better. Thank you. Okay, and then Bob, if you want to give the final portion of our, our information outreach?
About a year and a half ago, I started office hours at the Yarmouth Senior Center, offering once a week for, for two hours, counsel, if you will, to people interested in problems with their electricity bills or understanding their electricity bills. Supplier offers, we're all inundated by these, these offers over the telephone, in the mail, junk mail, and et cetera. And occasionally, people have come in who have accepted these offers and are now trying to figure out how to get out of them. So, I've occasionally become a consumer advocate and made telephone calls and helped a number of Yarmouth residents get back to a more sane supplier. Also, I've had questions about solar energy. We obviously can't recommend any specific supplier, but we, we can tell them what, I tell them what are the different ways you can have it, whether ownership or power, a power agreement. And, and then I advocate to them when they come in, make sure you get your energy audit from the Compact. In fact, most of them have, and I say, well, it may be time for the next one because there's always a little bit more. And in the last couple of weeks, I've been noticing, it's obviously something, it comes upon you, how many solar installations there are these days on the houses in Yarmouth? And I was thinking, we did a, about 10 years ago, we did a survey about people's interest in renewable energies. I thought it might be time for us to maybe do a census of what Yarmouth residents have already done and where we might find out what the best direction to help Yarmouth residents in the future.
Thank you, Bob. And Bob has indicated in our meeting that we had upstairs earlier, that if anyone has a solar contract that they're considering, if they want to bring it to him, he'll give it a look over and, and give them a sort of neutral assessment from someone who's not trying to sell you a solar contract. Thank you. And of course, he's, he's our excellent customer service guy. You figured that out by now, right? Yeah. Okay, so our orientation to the future is our, our third sort of uncharted area as we try to figure out how we can use energy to promote the well-being of the residents and business people of Yarmouth. I was at a gathering last night where Chris Adams of the Cape Cod Chamber talked about five different areas in which offshore wind energy might provide economic development opportunity on the Cape. We certainly would love to see economic development and sustainably wage jobs, of which he felt that there would be many assured, from the kind of businesses that would spring up around the, the new energy possibility. Economic development and environmental preservation depend increasingly on consuming less energy, but at the same time, getting the energy that we do have to use from clean sources and producing it in smart ways. As we look to the future and what we can suggest for a future Yarmouth, notice I keep talking about it as the town because I've never really known whether the proper noun is Yarmouthites, Yarmouthians, so we'll just say Yarmouth unless someone knows for sure. But as we look to the future, we have some ideas of ways in which we might be of help to the town for future energy thoughts. Susan?
One is a very simple application to the Five Cs, which is the Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative that the Center for Coastal Studies created a couple of years ago, and they just had a roundtable last Thursday. Lot of energy and excitement at that. And we can pair that with the Green Communities application process. And what's, I think, beneficial about doing that is that they have a, one of the tools that they offer is a carbon footprint calculator. And I thought of this, Tracy, when you were talking before about why are our electricity bills going up so much when we're supposedly conserving? And we really, the Five Cs really represents a perspective that we need to use less, conserve more. And the way we do that is by getting the data about what are we using and then how can we reduce it? That's primarily used in the Five Cs for households themselves, where the green communities will help us look at how we do that as a municipality. But there's a lot that we have to do to make sure that we actually are conserving, you know, the reduce, reuse, recycle of waste needs to be applied to energy. So, that's a very simple thing that we can do, for example.
And all three Yarmouth libraries, by the way, you all probably know this, but I mentioned this for the people at home, have a circulation item that will help in this. It's called WhatsApp APP, but it's, it's not an app for your phone. It's an actual little device that you can take home. And if you have some doubts about whether your refrigerators may be accounting for half of your electric bill, you can plug this in to measure it over a 24-hour period. Or you can do it with some other appliance and it'll, it'll give you the, the data that you'd need to, to put the whole energy picture together. So, finally, with an orientation to the future, we're interested in expanding clean energy generation in ways that will help town residents and the development of small business opportunity. Of course, it's not all energy. We would love to see the hookup of the last mile of the, the wonderful fiber optics that's been out there stretching along six- been out there, stretching along 6A, stretching along 28, and almost ready for use. And we think that would be a real boon to both residents and small businesses for the ability to hook up to that broadband. At the same time, we suggest an area in which Energy Committee might assist. And that's an initiative that combines clean energy and economic development, and it also gives a kind of stimulus to have people reminded of smarter energy possibilities. We'll do this, and then, this is all in capital letters, if we are invited to do so, this is our thought. It would assist Yarmouth residents and businesses if we dug in and did research on the cost of electric vehicle chargers that people could decide to purchase or not for their homes, for small businesses. And that would, I think, be a big boon to many small businesses. But here's the other thing, we're sort of sentimental. Remember, we have a memorial scholarship? So, we love the idea of having an option of-- and we would do like the flyer for this, even though obviously the town would administer the finances of this, like they do for memorial planks, memorial benches, and sweatshirts with Yarmouth Within Reach. We'd suggest that we could research and put together information on electric vehicle chargers in small numbers, pairs, fours, as possible memorial gifts, or as possible things that families might choose to do with a little nameplate. I'm ashamed to say, I never noticed that nameplate till tonight, when I came in kind of thinking of nameplates. But it seemed to us that this was not just a good thing for the town to be able to do. It increases clean energy in the town. It's a bit of an income stream. I never know really how, what our break-even point is on planks and benches, which are more attractive, I admit, at least in their immediate aspect. But it seemed to us that that might be something that a number of people who love the town but don't have the money to buy you a new car, or a really good table, or maybe something huge, like naming a room. That might be the sort of thing that they'd like to do for the town, and it's something that would outlast pier planks. I suspect that everybody who donates for those wonderful named planks must watch the nor'easter forecasts with great misgiving and wonder if the whole pier is still going to be there at the end of the nor'easter. So, is Regina here? Oh, okay. Our last link to the future, then, which would have been presented by Regina, who's clearly still handling parents at Matties, is that we do do the Georgia Lair Memorial Scholarship for a summer STEM program for a week at Four Seas. This week's, this month, this year's scholar, we just met him this afternoon, was Caleb Scribner. He's an eighth grader now over in DY High School. This is an opportunity that's available in the summer between Dennis Yarmouth students' seventh grade and eighth grade, when they're what they call a rising eighth grader about to go to the high school. And we urge anybody who's interested in applying for that to get in touch with Regina Wood at Matties Middle School. She's our associate member who handles that. Finally, with links to a future generation of Yarmouth and the people who will live and work here, we remind you that we always are delighted to do something that would help, and if you can think of anything energy-related where we could help, do have all our emails and figure that we would jump right in. Thank you.
There's no doubt about that.
Thank you, Mark.
Any questions? No, just thank you for all your work. Mike?
I don't have any questions, but your scope of what you do, your perception, your vision, if you will, is very, very broad-based, from very philosophically oriented toward the future to some really hands-on stuff that Bob does with the Senior Center. And I'm really impressed with the range of your vision of yourselves and what functions you can provide in the community, what advice you could give this board in terms of advocating energy policies and formulating those policies. I did go to one of your hearings about electric vehicles some time ago, and it was very, very interesting, and you had a consultant there, as I recall, Dan was there.
Yes.
And it was very informative. It's going to be interesting to see how that transitions from municipalities using those services, which I think is probably going to be your first major inroad with respect to electric vehicles, probably inspection vehicles, vehicles of short travel, of not a lot of miles all at one time, constantly recharged, probably have charging stations at a facility like this, or a DPW facility, or something like that, to see what that transition's going to be from there to individuals getting those vehicles. That's going to be fascinating to see how that catches on.
Well, I know there's a lot of people in the room here, probably to talk about golf. They look like golfers.
We will get right out of the way.
No, no, but I find, I think it's great because it's, your group is, the energy that you have, Joyce, and what you all have, the passion and energy for what you do, is just absolutely amazing. And I think it's awesome for the residents to see what a group of volunteers do for them and all the work that you do. I think what you do, Bob, is amazing because it is overly complex for folks to navigate that. I mean, you get so many offers, and sometimes you get trapped into different things, and just to have that opportunity to go and speak to somebody that's impartial about, like, what's going on here is something that especially the seniors, I'm sure, very much appreciate. But all the residents of Yarmouth, and Joyce, you're at all of our meetings, anything that has to relate to almost all of our meetings. If not, like you said, we get an email. But you do chime in, and you're very, very active in everything that's related to energy and energy savings and consumption for not just us, but all the residents, so, good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. You're not done yet, Steve. Sit down. My wife and I built a house 30 some odd years ago in Connecticut, and it was probably the single most livable house we've ever had. It had a groundwater heat pump, which was way far in advance of technology at that time, and was very heavily insulated, but it, the environment in the house was just fantastic. It relied on a well that was 375 feet deep, so it was considerable upfront expense. But I've wondered sometimes why that is not more heavily used here on the Cape, or that sort of approach, because I think the environment here is ideal for it. But that aside, I guess I'm saying that in terms of things that I appreciate, and I do appreciate efforts on energy efficiency. Some of us have shorter timeframes than we can expect to work with in the future, so--
Your 20-year payback. I don't know, Norm.
So, your focus on the day-to-day things that can be done and helping people get immediate returns is really appreciated. But we need to also think about a 50-year timeframe, because there are things that are going to change on the Cape. You know, someday, there'll be a couple more bridges built over the Cape Cod Canal, or the ones that we've got will be replaced with bigger ones. We don't know exactly how that's going to fold out. But if that increases the capacity for traffic here on the Cape, you know, some of us wonder, how the heck are we going to fit more people on Route 28 in early, or late July and early August? Where is the capacity to do that? And I think the long-run response to that has got to be thinking about what that costs us, looking at the big picture and saying, all that fuel going out to people sitting around, trying to get to a nice beach, and how else can we address that issue, reduce energy consumption, vehicle energy consumption, and at the same time, improve the ability of people to get here and there within our community? And I think that's part of the long-range focus that we need to lay out for our community from an energy perspective. And it doesn't just include our homes and energy generation. It also includes replacement and enhancements to the quality of life long-term that come from more efficient and more energy-efficient and easier ways of transportation. And, you know, this, Europe is way ahead of us in that regard, but that's driven by the fact that gas is a buck eighty a liter. So, they're very sensitive to finding ways to get around more easily and at higher quality. So, but, that being said, we do have a long-range plan that we want to work on for our community, and I think the Energy Committee has a place in that, in thinking long-term, as well as about things that will benefit us in the next five years. Thanks again for your work.
Thank you very much.
Although I'm an energy guy, I think that equally important is waste management, as we saw in our hearing earlier this evening. We've got to get a handle on that, and in some ways, maybe even more important, as the waste fills, not just here on Cape Cod, but all over the world.
Bob, there's a vacancy on that committee?
I know. No, 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 we can't have--
All right. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate your work.
Yes, now, Steve.
And if you have a charge for us, like before Christmas, Hanukkah, solstice season, New Year's gifts or whatever, we would promise, if you got that charge to us about the electric charger brochure, that we would get that to you by the first meeting in December, so that you could, the citizenry would have it available as holiday gifts if they chose that choice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move along to the next energy item on our agenda. I know the golfers are patiently waiting for the presentation that's going to come this evening, so we'll try to move things along as best we can here. So, Liz--
Good evening. Liz Argo, manager, Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative. And yes, I will move things right along so that we keep everybody happy. We are here tonight to give our annual report, and I have a copy of the annual report, which I will leave with Dan, and will send one electronically. But, and this is my changer, huh? I'm Liz Argo, and Leo Kakounis is our president, and Steve Gavin is the director appointed by Yarmouth. He's, as they noted before, he's not with us tonight, but I have given him my most, my greatest appreciation. Steve is absolutely great for us. So, we have been steadily increasing the participants. It's not just member towns, but we have school districts, and we have water districts, and now we have a total of 25 participants on the Cape and Martha's Vineyard. We are a sister installation to the Cape-like Compact. We were created in order to bring forward renewable energy, and that's what we are doing on behalf of these 25 entities. At the end of 2000, sorry, at the end of FY17, we had saved these participants over $10 million. That's since getting our projects, to the most part, up and running in 2013. So, with that kind of trajectory, we're going to be saving this region a huge amount of money. And of course, let's not forget that the greenhouse gas reduction is paramount as well, and it's about equal to 10,000 homes' electricity per year. So, I'm here to talk about the FY16, oh, you know what? Dan, Chris, this is last year's. No, it can't be, because it says FY16 savings. All right, let me see what I've done here with this presentation. Most of all, we want to get through this so that everybody can get onto the next project. Okay, this is--
That's the old one.
It's the old one. So, everybody on the board has the new one, so we'll just carry on. So, coming in FY 2019, we have a community solar offering that we're looking forward to. We are also doing a battery system at DY High School. That's in keeping with what we've been talking about in terms of resilience, but also, Norm was talking about his concerns about what happens when the wires go down. This is in order to make the grid more resilient and to make our emergency shelters more resilient. And if this model proves out financially, we hope to be able to drop it on other schools and small commercial businesses that already have or need PV, and we put it in with the batteries, so it makes the photovoltaics much more of a good complement to the grid. We're looking at a microgrid in Oak Bluffs that would go on the Oak Bluffs landfill. So, now, we're even taking the battery concept one step further. We have photovoltaics, we have the battery, and we're able to power some facilities that are right next door. And that's the kind of thing that you probably will be looking at at the Yarmouth Energy Park, too, as you get closer to that being a reality. We have a Round Four PV initiative that we are starting up now, and I heard the golf committee saying, gee, we might think about that for the cart barns. I encourage them to come to CIVEC and talk to us about that. And I might mention, too, before we get off of PV initiatives, that Yarmouth has two projects in our Round Three PV initiative. They're both the Yarmouth Fire Station One and Yarmouth Fire Station Three. And we've been anxiously waiting for the state to finally release what's called the SMART program, the Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target, Smart Renewable Target. So, fortunately, that came out. The utilities gave their approval on the tariffs. It went through DPU, and now they are just writing the final order, which will make all of the construction projects go forward. So, we're very excited about that, as I know you will be, too. In the presentation that the board has in front of them, there is talk about the savings to Yarmouth. And I have here, and I will leave here for any of the residents who want to pick one up, our annual report that talks about the benefits to the town of Yarmouth. It compares FY 2017 and FY 2018. And long story short, that the projects that Yarmouth takes net metering credits from has saved the town in FY 17 $117,000. In FY 18, it saved the town $145,000. And the sheet that I'm going to leave here shows you which projects that came from. Some of them are on the landfills that you see around the Cape and Martha's Vineyard, and some of them are right here at the DY Regional School District ground mounts. Oh, I don't have anything over there. So, going on and talking about the savings in the next box, we are here tonight to talk about, oh, and what I did in the box that the board has is I put up the two fire stations, so now you can see what you're projected to save from the two fire stations, too. So, from Fire Station One, the new photovoltaic system on the roof would, annual savings are estimated to be about $14,000, and Yarmouth Fire Station Three will be about $29,000. So, that will go into your savings pot as soon as they get up and running. So, we're here today also, besides giving you this report, to talk about the adder. In FY 18 and FY 19, we had a CIVEC debt of about $100,000. We went over that with you. Norm, in particular, came into the office to go over that. And the 14 towns approved the Round One adder for both of those fiscal years of about a half a penny per kilowatt hour. We are back because we've looked at our projected budget needs, and we are projecting a debt for FY '20. We brought it down to $36,000. We're very pleased with that. But we still need an adder. So, what we figure we can do is we can reduce that half-penny adder to a quarter-- So what we figure we can do is we can reduce that half a penny adder to a quarter penny adder. So that's what we are looking for from you tonight, noting that 10 of the 14 towns that, from which we need approval, we have now received approval. And then on the last box, the motion is basically laid out there for you, and it would note that the Yarmouth savings from round one, solo round one, because this is the only one that's going to be affected, would be about $34,000. And the cost, you would not receive the 34, it'd be reduced by about $1,150. So that is our presentation, and I would just wrap up by saying I have a special feeling for Yarmouth, because many of you don't know, but I designed and helped install the solar installation on the Yarmouth Town Hall. Back with George Alair.
Okay.
So we're looking now to go back. There is no adder at all now on one, is there?
Yes, you are paying an adder now.
So I thought, the last time you were here, we talked about three, right? The third round?
Yes.
That was a half a cent.
Correct. Now, and it's very complex, I don't blame you, Tracy. So if you, it wouldn't be here, but I can pass this out very fast.
So we're reducing a half a cent on round one to?
Yeah. You're round one projects, you're an off-taker of the round one projects. They are Eastham landfill, Harwich landfill, Nunney Pogwell, and Tisbury landfill. So those are your round one projects. Meanwhile, you're involved two in round two projects, Barnstable Fire District, the DY Regional School District ground mount, a first generation wind project, Marguerite School, and so on. So, and then round three is where you're going to have your own two projects, and yes, they carry a half a penny.
Okay.
So this is just those round one projects.
Last time you were here, you were in the midst of intervening with the state.
Yes.
For some regulations, and I think that that's why you needed the half percent for the legal fees?
That's part of it, yeah. Although we have, we now budget better for things like needing to intervene and be an activist on behalf of the towns. If ever source again challenges the value of the net metering credit, we need to be ready. So, but we've reduced in other places, and we're looking to, we started consulting now for some of the towns. Administering all of the net metering credits and the transactions that are relative to that is complex. So we are now providing consulting as a business for Town of Sandwich, Province Town, and Dennis. So that's a little income that we managed to bring in, that that's one reason our ask has gone down. So even though we need to keep the legal budget ready for those kinds of fights on your behalf, we have managed to tighten our belt elsewhere and bring in some new income.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you coming back to lower. It's not often that we see people come back and want to lower our agreements.
Right.
So I appreciate that, Liz. Thank you for all your hard work on the behalf of all the residents. And I think one of the things that you didn't talk a lot about, you just did from other things, is that we're involved also in the revenue sharing, so our town benefits from projects of?
Regionwide.
Regionally, yeah.
Other towns, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mike?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
All right. No, I'm fine, too. Thanks, Liz.
I'll make a motion to approve the CVEC round one adder request for FY20 at the rate of .0025, one quarter of a penny.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 So we'll see you at the ground, at the grand opening of the construction projects on the two fire stations.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming, Liz.
You're welcome.
That's been a long time in the works, too, huh?
Yeah.
We did that when we were over at?
January, I think it was.
Yeah, January.
All right. So last but not least, we have the golf study update with.
Oh, we have the Parker's River Bridge.
We're jumping right over that. We, that's not good.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to respectfully postpone our presentation.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to respectfully postpone our presentation. I was laughing, just laughing at that.
You're not going to have very many fans out there, Pat.
The River Bridge?
No, we aren't.
Oh.
We didn't have all the.
Thank you, Liz.
...
If I may introduce, here joining us tonight is Jim Keegan, and also our consultant for golf, and also the chairman of the Golf Enterprise Committee, Christian Seymour. Mr. Keegan is a nationally renowned expert on golf, and has spent over 20 years studying and traveling and evaluating municipal golf courses throughout the world. He's traveled over two and a half million miles and visits over 400 courses a year. He has done evaluations on thousands of courses, and he comes to us from Colorado with an expertise, a background in accounting. He served in the military and the Air Force as a captain, I believe, and I think you will find that his expertise and his experience will give you a perspective, not only of our piece of the world, but how golf is around the world. But most importantly, he was charged through our consultant contract to make a recommendation on three forms of management of our courses. Behind me is Scott Gilmore Skard, is our new superintendent, and with him is Jim, I hope Jim's there, is he? There you are, Jim Armantrow, our director of golf for the last 17 years, who will be retiring this November. So as this is a good time to evaluate a new superintendent, the care of our courses, finishing of a major maintenance project, potential of new ones, Jim was charged with evaluating and bringing to you recommendations for future management. So enough from me, I turn it over to Mr. Keegan.
Thank you so much. Of all that travel.
I'm all set, go ahead.
Of all that travel, it's absolutely a pleasure to be with you tonight. You live in a very, very great part of the world, the community of Cape Cod and Yarmouth. Having now visited over 10 courses, this is really special.
You should only be playing in Yarmouth.
We were secret shopping them all so that we could determine the value you're creating. But we were hired for a simple reason. Should you self-manage the golf course? Should you lease it like Falmouth is doing? Or should you bring in an independent management company? What is the best option? And the reason that we were hired is that to my left, a gentleman for 18 years with care, with passion, has led the town of Yarmouth's golf courses with a death professionalism that has to be and is well-respected throughout the industry. Jim has got a great brand and is well-known in the industry and the PGA circles. The industry, to show how good he has been, has been in a decline for the last 10 years, and only in the last year or two was your loss at $143,000. So Jim has done a masterful job, but in six weeks, he's retiring. And so before we can say, what is the best option, you really need to make some decisions. You've got, are running a town and the allocation of resources. What's core? Do you have all the money you need for police, fire, schools, streets, and utilities? Then, what's important is that you provide open park space, ball fields, libraries, and entry-level golf, because everything that's core or important is not provided for by private enterprise. I'm on Golf Magazine's panel. I travel extensively, I love the game of golf. I'm sitting here tonight because I was a catty scholar, so I love the game of golf. But the harsh reality for municipality is, if you were to close both golf courses, we're not denied the opportunity to play golf. There's many opportunities. So golf, in terms of how city allocates and towns allocate resources, is discretionary. Your job is absolutely difficult. It's really tough, because you're looking for the golf course to be self-sustaining. Jim, Pat, they're looking, and Scott are looking for more resources. The golf course is a living organism that is constantly dying. You've got to invest in irrigation systems, in bunker sand, in tee complexes, in clubhouses. It needs an annual subsidy. You've got taxpayers, seven of eight in Yarmouth don't play the game. And so they're saying, should we be allocating money to one-eighth of the population? And golfers are always looking for the lowest cost per round. So trying to align those four, you have a difficult task in aligning the diverse interests within a town to come up with a centrist view. So the first decision you have to make, is the golf course a community asset that should be funded out of the general fund, or is it a business enterprise that should stand on its own? Because if you look at the quality and the importance of a golf course, it's an office for those that are retired. It's the entry door to the game. In all of my years of playing golf, I can name less than a handful of people that I've met on a course that I didn't want to have lunch or meet with. It's a great venue. There's so many tremendous benefits in terms of, it attracts visitors, it attracts your tourists, it hosts charity and tournaments and high school events. Is it a community asset, or is it a business enterprise? You have lots of advantages as a municipality. The profit motivation's not intense, you're insulated from business downturns, you've got better access to capital. But there's also some disadvantages in a municipality. One, the payroll cost structure is clearly higher than it is. If you look at the EBITDA of a municipality versus a daily fee golf course, largely because of fringe benefits, often municipalities have labor unions involved, so the payroll cost is higher. You also have the inability and inflexibility oftentimes over rates. Golf courses today, daily fee, they're using dynamic pricing. Based on the demand for a given time and day, it determines the rate that's actually charged. So if we look at the timeline of decay, what you're experiencing is what's being experienced by municipalities across the country. You're not unique. I was just in Clean, Texas, they're down 400,000. Odessa, Texas, down 450,000, they're on the way to lose a million three. Louisville, Kentucky, has 10 courses, they're losing seven figures on an annual basis, they're looking to close multiple courses of the 10. You're not unique in terms of the challenges you're finding in running your golf courses. So what we wanted to do, and I sort of note that the projector's a little crooked, is that to explain what are the differences between self-management, management, and If you self-manage, you're totally at risk for all capital, all losses, and you get the benefit of all profits. If you bring in a management company, you still have full risk, you're still obligated to put in the full capital, and you get the full profits less a management fee. An 18-hole golf course, the management fee will come in, if you put it out on RFP, between 76 and $100,000. I speculate, if you were to choose the management option, you'll see proposals from the leading management companies between 125 up to 200,000 to manage the golf course, depending on the scope of services you're looking for. And if you opt to do what Falmouth did, they have no risk. They get a percentage of the gross revenue, $40,000. But what Falmouth did is that they were committed as part of the lease to invest $990,000 over the five years of the lease. So they're coming out of the general fund in Falmouth under the lease structure. So, who am I? Pat was really nice in terms of the introduction. But what it's allowed me to do in traveling so much and showing the clients that we've had, is that in the beginner's mind, there's many possibilities. In the expert mind, there are few. What I've been able to do is, using what I'm going to share with you tonight, I've written five books that are used by 16 universities to analyze the financial operation of a golf course. And so the question you have to ask yourselves, at what level do you want the golf courses to operate? Is it merely sufficient that revenues cover expenses? Or does it have to cover revenue and expenses and put aside a future capital reserve so that is renovations are required, you're going to have the funds in the bank account? Or do you want to fund it and make sure the golf courses are operating at a level of revenue minus expenses plus future capital plus debt, the $2 million in debt? We were charged with a responsibility that was, you were looking to ensure the golf courses were fully self-sustaining. With that having been said, we looked at the competitive set of courses, and that what we've done, as only Rainman would do, and Dustin Hoffman, is I took 44 variables by the 15,204 courses in the United States, and I've ranked ordered the profit potential of 1 to 15,204. And you can see based on variables that all of the courses on Cape Cod have the economic potential to be successful based on the demographics. But if we look at the bottom line in terms of the number of golfers per 18 holes, there are 1,733 golfers per 18 holes in the United States. Bass River within a 10-mile radius per 18 holes is consistent with national averages. In a major city, there's about 2,200 golfers per 18 holes. But when we look at all of the other courses, it clearly calls out that the importation of golfers from beyond the 10-mile radius is necessary for the courses to be economically self-sustaining. And so when we look at, what was the research we did? We use seven steps. What's the local market? Would you put a Maserati dealership into an impoverished neighborhood? No, you wouldn't do it. What's the weather? That helps us determine what's the season passes or pricing. What technology are you using? How do your financial benchmarks compare? What are the facilities that are depreciating? The reason, Sleckman posted, is that we visited those golf courses, is that we wanted to see the experience level from, there's 13 customer touchpoints. What was the value I was seeing for what we were paying? And lastly, we surveyed the customers. Well, what we use is what's called heuristics, where an exhaustive study is impractical. We use rules of thumb or benchmarks as a way of figuring out quickly, like a doctor, if you knew the temperature of a patient, you knew his health. So in using that, we looked at first, 80% of all golf courses fall within a slope rating of 115 to 124. 75% of the golfers come from a 10-mile radius, there's the median household income within that neighborhood. Where we see demand exceed supply, in New York City, golf courses have 30,000 golfers per 18 holes. We just did a study for American Golf Corporation for an article, most of their courses have more than 5,000 golfers per 18 holes. That's why they're doing well. If we see that it's had championships, or if you're in the mountains or in rivers, it helps you sustain the experience value. Well, there's only six numbers you really need to know. What's the mosaic profile? What's the income level? The age and ethnicity? The golfers per 18? The slope rating? And all of those have got to be in place to have a championship golf course. Most people don't know what the mosaic profile is. Everybody in this room is in one of these 10 categories. You're either a bourgeoisie prosperity, current family, comfortably retired, sophisticated singles. And 80% of all golfers are found, and all of the people sitting behind me are in one of those four categories, an 80% probability. Golfers are not low-income elders, they're not metropolitan strugglers, not post-industrial survivors, by and large. And so what we've done as part of our research is we've looked at, Bass River has got a positive mosaic profile of 26.82%, meaning the people that live within 10 miles, 20% more bourgeoisie prosperity than the United States as a whole. You can see that there's 11.2% within 10 miles of Bayberry Hills, 25%, 24.49% are comfortably retired, more than the United States as a whole. And why this is relevant is that we take the slope rating of the golf course against the mosaic profile and say, what's the economic potential of the courses? We then drive into the demographics and make projections. Within 10 miles of Bass River, the average resident has median household income of $74,000. We look at the distribution, because for every one round an African-American or Hispanic-American plays, seven rounds are played by Caucasians. So we're trying to determine the profile on what makes a course successful. You can see all of the statistics we've studied in terms of the population, and this is from tactician of Boston firm and the National Golf Foundation. The key is, what is the revenue potential? Well, when we looked at weather, you've only got 217 playable days, defined as between 45 and 90 degrees with less than 2/10. 45 and 90 degrees with less than two tenths of an inch of rain and less than 20 miles an hour wind speed. What we can debate is that accurate. I know some golfers play when it's 35 and 40. But the question is, using the same measurement across the country, it allows us to determine, how many playable days do you have by month? And what is your capacity for rounds? With your 36 holes, if you add the Bayberry links nine, 45 holes, you've got a capacity of about 120,000 rounds, and you're only using 64,000 rounds. You're at about 50% of capacity. So when we take the model and we look at what is the fair market value based on national surveys we've done, where the average player will play one out of four days, the rack rate's $45, in the country, the average season pass should be $2,000. You're at $850. If we look at the fair market value based on the posted rack rates for Bass River and Bayberry, the fair market value, because you have fewer playable days but you've got a higher green fee price, would suggest that the season pass be $2,000. I find it not coincidental that Falmouth is at $2,200 for their unlimited season pass. I played there Friday night, Sunday night, excuse me. I'm not suggesting that you take those rates to $2,200. But if you look at the issue in terms of where the rates are, so here are all of the rates that are currently in place, the rounds played. And you can see that the issue is not with yourselves, it's a cultural problem that goes across the Cape. Harwich, Brewster. The mission statement is to provide affordable golf for the residents. And if that is what you decide, that's great. I'm an accountant, but my goal is to advise you on making choices. $2,200 is the fair market value. So when we looked at your technology, emails are sent out on a weekly basis. I could maybe comment on the graphics. But what I suggest is that labor is 52% of the total expenses in running a golf course. How do you check yourself in an airline? How do you now check yourself into a hotel? You will see within three to five years at a golf course, one person behind the counter with a tablet where the golfer is going to check themselves in. So the technology you're using today, if you're looking to run your operations more efficiently, one of the recommendations would be is to looking at a different technology platform where a starter could be on the tee, on the internet, and as these valued members of Yarmouth come to play, all he has to do is hit a button and check them in. Eliminate the need to go behind the counter. We save labor cost. But we looked at the metrics, and so it's really funny. We went into all of the CAFRE report, stands for Consolidated Annual Financial Report, that's posted by all these municipalities. Oh my gosh, there are no two municipalities that report golf the same way. So you may hear in the Brewster report, they cash flowed $952,000. You can go look at Barnstable and Dennis and what they're saying their cash flow is. I have to congratulate Dan and Pat Armstrong, because what we wanted to do was crack the eggshell and go into the details on all the financial statements. And so they reached out to the town managers, and all of those cities, with the exception of Dennis and Sandwich, confirmed all of these other details. And I again apologize, this projector's a little misfocused, but we started looking at the administrative charges, the benefits, the compensated abstinence, the retirement, the depreciation, how it's debt handled, and is being charged against the golf course. And look at the number of columns like Barnstable, the capital assets is no, capital improvements, no, the pension, no, the principal payments on debt, no. They're not being charged against the golf course. So when you hear that all their cash flowing is before all of these charges. Or if we look at, having done this, the only one that I think because they don't have debt is Dennis, I sense they're doing well. I was at Highlands today, while the pines was closed, I walked it. I sense they're doing very well without the debt service. I talked to numerous people on their staff. So what do we know? Here's some rules of thumb. This is heuristics. If we take the gross revenue, you should do 20% earnings before interest taxes, depreciation, and amortization. You should be at $753,000 profit. Zip is the 2019 budget. Another benchmark, you can determine the gross revenue of any golf course in the country by only knowing two numbers. You merely walk into the golf shop, look at the highest rate they post, and you say, how many starts do you have? You multiply those two numbers by 60%. So if we use those numbers, your revenue should be at $2,008,000 from greens fees and membership fees, and it's at $2,270,000. Even though that you've reported a loss last year, I am pleased, and I sense because the weather was adverse, because of the fact that Bayberry was undergoing renovation, I think you're going to see a surge in your income. And such that your budget of zero, I think is going to be achieved. I think Jim is leaving the franchise in good stead. If we look at, here's the essence of the problem. And it's not here. It's not these individuals. It's across the entire Cape. If we look at the number of rounds that are played by daily fee members, it's 41%, but they're paying 62%. They're paying $47 a round. Conversely, your members are generating 58% of the rounds, but only compensated for 37% of the revenue. They're paying $20.52 a round, which, that's great. If you want to subsidize golf, if it's to provide affordable leisure, and you want to take the debt out of the general fund, if you want to compensate, all you have to do is select the numbers that you want to balance. And so there's a strong suggestion is that taking the season pass up to $2,200 is politically unacceptable. Can't do it. Most municipalities, and this would set a precedence in Cape Cod, are now offering 99, 199, or 299, and you get 10, 20, or 30% off. But you would be the leaders. These people would not be here as they would Exodus to go somewhere else. They'd be paying $400 more to become non-resident members. But if we owned the golf course, we'd probably take the risk for two or three years of what may happen. We'd probably take the risk as businessmen. So when we looked at the facilities, a golf course is a living organism. Greens have a 30-year life, and they've got to be renovated for $900,000. Irrigation systems today are costing up to $2 million. They've got a 20- to 25-year life. Should we be pulling capital aside, like you've done in borrowing $2 million, it is now going to be a burden against the golf course going forward. So in theory, you should cash flow $260,000 per year per course for future capital needs. So when we looked at, what's the fair market value? In a study with Clemson universities, we've tested, it's not what the competitors are charging, it's what's the strategy, the conditioning, the turf texture, and the fair market value based on Bass River, based on the fuse, is about $75 is the fair market value for that golf course. Bayberry Hills is worth $90, fair market value, which is ironically the price that is being charged. So when we looked at the customers, we did a survey, we had over 2,000 responses. And if we look at the number of golfers, 73% were male. And what we also did is that we sent out to people within the park, in the recreational database, not the city at whole, not up on the website, those that were recreational users but who said they were not golfers. You can see the average age was 63, the recreational was 49, the household income was 100,000 versus 79,000. Obviously, recreational golfers are not members. And you can see that 67% of the golfers are residents, 85% of the recreational users are. So we asked them some key questions. What type of experience should you provide? Should you offer a championship mid-tier or entry-level facility? And the majority answer was a mid-tier facility. We then said, how should you renovate your courses? Comprehensive? For example, I could make the case that Bass River and the clubhouse there could be fabulous. There's issues coming down the road with drainage and sewers, and the course going under renovation probably in two to four years. But what a great location, what a great view, what a historic course, built in 1900. They felt that you should invest to remain competitive. What benchmark? And this always is the telling point. You can always know a person's feeling based on what is their own self-interest. The golfers feel that, it's 40%, over 32% of the golfers feel it's a recreational asset and you should support it out of the general fund. Conversely, close to 50% of the recreational golfers think the golf course should be You've got a divergent viewpoint there. The golfers want you to underwrite it, understandably. The recreational and citizens think it should be self-sustaining. That's why you're elected to make these tough decisions. If we looked at, should the nine at the Blue Course be closed? 50% was, should remain open regardless of cost of alternatives? And you can see the non-golfers start thinking that it should be closed. If we ask the question on, should it be closed during the winter? Again, the golfers are saying, no, it should be open. Whereas the recreational golfers are saying, depending on cost savings, it should close. The Ocean House closes January 1 to the middle of March. Most of the restaurants are closed over on Martha's Vineyard. Many of the hotels are closed on 28. Would you save money? So therefore, if we look at, what does the public think? Should you lease? Should you self-manage? And they said if it was an unsustainable burden, the citizens felt that bringing in a management company was the best alternative. So that brings us to why we retain. Should you self-manage, lease, or go under a management contract? There's all kinds of examples of, you've really got three departments, food and beverage, maintenance, and the pro shop. Many examples of how, but what we know is that 45% of all municipal courses have external management. The advantages of a lease is shifts the operating burden to the leasing, the administrative overhead's eliminated. The municipality, it's a burden on a daily basis. I've heard that consistently. You're out of the business, and the lease terms could get you some capital. So if we get 3.3 million and you get 4% like Falmouth did, that'd be 132,000? It's not going to cover your debt service. Lease doesn't work. Meaning being self-sustaining. If we display the management company miss, the people sitting behind me are often really skittish about a management company. They fear that the rates will go up, the rates are set by you. They will formulate a business plan, and they'll bring it to you, and you'll say yes or no, and you'll set the policies and procedures. They work on your behalf. They're looking for, the conditions will deteriorate. Well, that ultimately, usually these management contracts may have an incentive if they generate positive cash flow. It's not in their interest to do it. The service will suffer. There will be an employee house cleaning, whether it be Kemper, or Casper, or Trune, or OB Sports, or Touchstone. They don't have a lot of people sitting in the bullpen. The first people that they interview is the existing staff. And to the extent that the staff meets their standards and are willing to work professionally and serve the customers, they're retained. It would require a management company, one person on the staff who's got knowledge, whether it be Jim, whether it be Scott, who understands the golf business and could administer the contract to make sure that they were fulfilling it and coming forward with the capital request. The advantages are lower operating costs. In cities like we've consulted with, New Braunfels, they're at 47% fringe benefits. Albuquerque's at 55%. Your fringe benefits are 37%. There'd be a savings in the fringe benefits. And you're removed from day-to-day operations. So there's many pros and there's many cons that are in your package. But if we look at the third-party management and the total payroll and the benefits and the $260,000 for two courses you're going to have to put together, you're still going to have to come out of the general fund. So the message is whether you select lease, self-manage, or management company, you're probably looking in the short term at funding something out of the general fund for the golf course, based on the current policies and procedures. So self-managing, liquor liabilities avoided if you bring in a management company. You have fringe benefit savings. And so when we look at all of that, what happens is, the management organizational structure you select doesn't make a difference until the culture is changed on Cape Cod. You're going to continue to bleed because one option, and this is not the short-term option, this is an option for four to seven years. If the links were to close, if it were to be converted into a solar farm, because it would be part of the golf enterprise fund, the revenues therefrom in four to seven to 10 years would help sustain golf, and you could keep the same structure in place. Should it be closed for the season? I have great professional respect for Jim. We have different opinions. Jim thinks that the incremental cost of having full-time staff should remain open. I'd personally close it. Two people, two honest individuals with different opinions, run the numbers. But if nothing else changes, the 5% cap you will have on season passes that requires a town vote should be discarded. The fair market value's $2,200, but let's think about this. If they, 700 people paid $400 more a year, that's $280,000, which covers the loss, which covers the debt payment, and nothing else would need to change. So we're not advocating $2,200. All we're looking to do is how do we generate $300,000 more? But you can't get there until the cap changes. And so if you said that cap's going to remain in place, we suggest, and this is not a politically acceptable solution, you cancel all the memberships. Eliminates the profit of the 5% cap. But these are well-meaning people behind me. They're residents, they support you. I'm glad I'm sitting here, not there. Because you've got to make the decision. Because here's what I know for sure, the Cape Cod golfer has champagne taste on a beer budget. And the only thing I think we all can agree on in this room is this is what they'd like to do to me. And so in closing, before I answer any questions, I want to thank Kristin. I would like to export Kristin to become the head of the golf advisory board for every client we work for. She is marvelous, she is reasoned, she is a very special person that is balancing the passion of some with the reason and responsibility of fiscal stewardship. She's a real asset. And I say that sincerely, I've done this for 25 years, number one. Anywhere I've been, number one. So having said that, what questions can I answer for you? Hearing none? It's late. Everybody's ready to go to bed.
Do you have any suggestions on resolving the cultural problem? I mean, it's a, how do we move all of Cape Cod to a structure that is more realistic and that will cover? I mean, you can look at this as a $600,000 revenue problem. $300,000 would be covered by an increase in residential fees, as long as we got rid of the 5% and maybe inched up over time. But that still leaves a $300,000 deficit for future capital costs.
Correct.
I mean, that's really, this isn't a problem that has been created in the last two years. This has been a problem going back to when the courses were first purchased.
Correct, sir.
The thought of operating on a break-even basis fundamentally ignores that capital problem.
That's correct.
Because sooner or later, that's going to come home to roost. Sooner or later, you're going to have to invest, not just the $2 million we just put in, but another $2 million, and another $2 million. And no matter how we approach that, every day that goes by, we're building And no matter how we approach that, every day that goes by, we're building that debt to ourselves, that's, and municipalities are well-known for, and states are well-known for ignoring some of those realities. So I guess the first question is, do you have any recommendations for the cultural issue? Have you seen that elsewhere across the country and addressed successfully? Or is it something we've got to just pack away through our own efforts?
It's unique. Cape Cod is unique to the country in terms of the concentration of golf courses within a limited geographic scope that have the same pricing model of season passes with a mission statement of affordable golf. Sitting in front of me are representatives from two cities. Together, the change could be made. And I think Falmouth would follow, Barnstable would follow, Hyannis would follow. But there will be a two- or three-year pain in terms of establishing the leadership to change the culture. And again, we're only looking at 400 bucks. We're not looking at the fair market value of 2,200 because of the tourist continued. But as they diminish. So it's, I can share with you what we did in Ann Arbor. Their season age was, their rate for seniors was 55. The correct rate to get a senior green fee should be 65. And so the city of Ann Arbor made a decision where they called in all of the golf courses within a 30-mile radius and said, we see a long-term economically unsustainable problem. We're going to change our age. They selected 62. And we think you will probably cannibalize some of our golfers for the next three or four years. But we have a long-term fiduciary responsibility to the seven of eight people who are residents of our city who don't play golf to create economic stability. And they did it. And a municipality is like a buoy on a lake. The prices you said and the policies go up accordingly. You set the benchmark. And so collectively, if Brewster and Yarmouth, and I think Barnstable, of their 1,180 members, 70 are over the age of 80 in Barnstable. Do you grandfather all of these individuals under a pass and no longer sell them to any new player? There's all kinds of options available that a management company or a lessee could professionally guide you through. You have to take care and protect and love these people. But long-term, as I said, in 50 years, that you were talking about energy, none of us in this room, except Kristin, are going to be here. So how do we put it on a basis of long-term sustainability? I think it's the leadership of several cities coming together and saying, we need to do this, realizing that the play. Because even if you were to change your rates to 1,200, the only alternative is for them to go get the non-resident rates at the other towns, which is $1,200. So you've actually got a cushion of $400 for them to move. But that's your decision. I'm just the economist. I'm just the strategist. Sleckman-Forest, your thoughts?
Well, and I mean, this is a topic that I've been thinking about for quite a while. And, you know, the broader context for me is looking just at municipal government overall. Many of our towns are facing similar challenges that go beyond golf. Rising costs in terms of providing services, labor costs, a whole range of costs, pension, health benefit costs, OPEB costs. And so for many of our communities throughout the Cape, when you look long-term, financially, it's very, very challenging. And when you look at the region, we probably have more government per capita than most other regions, all right, in the country. I mean, that's the reality of it. We have so many layers, so many groups. We have well-funded municipalities serving very modestly-sized populations. So we have an enormous amount of government serving a relatively modest amount of people. And we've seen other areas around the country where you take a population of 200,000, Cape Cod, and many of these areas operate probably at half the aggregate cost, or maybe 2/3 the aggregate cost of what taxpayers on Cape Cod spend. So the golf sort of fits, the golf conversation sort of fits, in my view, in a much broader narrative. But it's not sustainable. So for me, this is not an issue of, well, let's think about it, let's maybe kick the can down. All towns, including this one, have some big decisions to make going forward in terms of just how to sustain basic services with costs rising. So clearly, this is a priority. The voters of Yarmouth have basically said they want to keep costs in line. They want to make this a self-sustainable operation. And we've heard loud and clear that that's an important approach in terms of how we do this. I'm very much keen on many of your recommendations. I'm also interested in hearing what our staff have to say, some of the folks on the golf committee, the enterprise fund committee, and even what people in the community have to say. How much of what they might recommend, how that affects my views. I mean, my views are pretty well-set. Cost of governance is incredibly expensive. We're facing challenging times going forward. So this is just part of the conversation in terms of...
Your thoughts, which I highly value.
Thank you. Well, JJ and I have been talking quite a bit. And, you know, there are some big decisions to be made here. There really are. And they are, these are decisions that are, in my opinion, rather threefold, where we have members, we have golf operations, and we have the town. And all of these, this threefold needs, everything needs to be respected. We have to have respect for everybody's opinions. I think that there is a lot of information that was given tonight. There's going to be a lot of opinions that go rampant as far as who wants what, who thinks what is fair. You know, we've been talking about this on the Golf Enterprise Committee for a very long time. A lot of what JJ has brought to the forefront simply reflects what Mr. Armitrout has brought up time and time again at meetings, most specifically being the 5% rule. I feel that there's a lot of potential to be fair to all parties involved, but we all have to work together. I mean, we just have to work together. Some things, some people are not going to like, and that's just going to have to happen. But there are also a lot of golfers out here who really, you know, if you put your ear to the ground, there are a lot of them that are fine with this. There are a lot of them with fine with having a little bit higher rates to know that they're going to maintain the benefits of a full-time, anytime membership. So once the members have access to this information, and once everybody has had time to digest it and think logically, that it can't be just an all-about-me kind of moving forward, it has to be a team effort. I feel like we can get somewhere where the Town of Yarmouth Golf is going to be in a position that the townspeople will be happy, the members will be happy, and the select board will perhaps be able to focus on a few other things besides worrying about membership rates and how many people are upset about that number. So I think it's doable. And I think that, you know, short-term, there may be a struggle. Long-term, I think we'll be in for the investment of the Town of Yarmouth Golf to, for it to maintain for years to come. And I think that should be the goal.
Yeah, I think for me, what struck me was the divergence in the opinions of golfers and non-golfers. I think the challenge for us going forward is, I mean, quite frankly, it's going to be easier for the select board to address this issue, is if there's a way to promote a consensus among the golfing community and obviously the leaders within our municipality, particularly the folks like your committee and others working in this area. I think the more there's agreement and consensus there, and I'm pleased that there's been more of a dialogue in recent months with, you know, the municipality and the golfing community. I think that just needs to continue. It needs to be encouraged. I'm somewhat optimistic that we can find that kind of consensus, so that ultimately, when we do get to the point where we have to make a decision, a tough decision, a tough decision's going to have to be made. And you've given us a range of things to be thinking about. So ideally, it would be great for that consensus to emerge and be presented to us, where we're having a meeting just like this, and the people in this room have had the opportunity to digest this, engage in Q and A, and then you're all coming together as a consensus, more or less, saying, these are the three or four things that we can take away from this study that we believe will financially put the golfing operations here on a more sustainable business going forward. That's the ideal. Now, you mentioned we need to change the culture of golf, or let's put it this way, create more collaboration with the other golf courses. And I think that's a very, very interesting point. I'd also be interested in the extent to which those in the community believe we can actually pull that off, if we can get some degree of collaboration. Because you're right, they're all bleeding. We were at, I was at a select board meeting in Brewster last night. The first topic on the agenda was golf, and how do we get out of the financial pickle that we find ourselves now in with fiscal year 19? And there were no easy answers. The Golf Commission is working on their plan, all right, to deal with the financial challenges, both short-term and long-term. So I deal with this every day in terms of the work that I'm doing in Brewster, and it's a very serious problem. So the question I would have, and this would be to Dan and Pat and others, is do you, do we think that that's, because that would certainly help us. So the question I would have is whether or not that's really feasible. We don't have to answer that now, but I just think that's a point that we need to really explore. So I want to thank you for your presentation and the tremendous amount of work that's gone on. This has been very helpful.
Thanks. Select person post, any thoughts?
Well, thank you, Kristin. I think that your words were very well-received because it's true, we're all, we all need to work together. And it is a lot of information that we've been given. And, you know, I make a lot of decisions here based on history, right? So the town said many years ago that they wanted to be self-sustaining. So that is, to me, the marching orders of this board, until I hear otherwise. So that's why I've had, I guess, a little bit of heartburn about the general fund, funding it. In the short term, I think it's appropriate. I think the information will be helpful because the, I'm not a golfer, but the folks that I've spoken to have very, you know, if you want to see this room full, you raise a golf fee. And they're very, very passionate about what they do. And I think having this information and them understanding collectively what the alternatives are, I think, is helpful. I mean, we're in a position, we have to make a decision. And so we talk a lot about value and feeling like they're members, part of something, that's part of the culture. And that's something I think that they don't mind paying for. And so that's been the struggle. And I think this information will help them see that financially, it's, a decision has to be made. So if, you know, the rates don't want to be raised, we have to go to option B, or we need the public to tell us that they want the general funds to start supporting it as recreational happening, which I know there's different opinions on. There's a great benefit economically for economic development, for tourism. There's a lot of pieces that go into this. But I do think that, once we have time to digest the information, I hope that we have some type of public forum or something where we can hear from the public about this information before we make a decision. I'm not so sure that we'll be able to do it and see the benefits of any of it in the next fiscal year. So we'll see what happens there. Perhaps we will be able to. But, you know, there's been some interesting ideas thrown out today about perhaps not selling memberships in the future. I guess I was a little, you and I met, and I didn't get to read the RFP, but when I went in, the first thing was, well, here are your three options. And so to me, I'm like, wait a minute. You know, I wanted, I didn't want it to be limited to three options. I wanted to hear basically an expert tell us the best way to operate, and not minimize it to three things. Perhaps it's the sale. And we talked a little bit about the Links course, and people I talked to and how they feel about the Links course, and it's very underutilized, and perhaps we could sell that piece. So there's a lot of options at play here that we need to further investigate. Because if we can utilize some of the underutilized space for revenues, to offset it, to help not have to increase as much, I think that those are all things that I want to continue to hear and continue to listen. I'm very hesitant about outsourcing. I'm very hesitant about leasing. I don't think that they have the same interests in terms of turning back over to the town, a product of the condition that we give it to them in. So there's a lot of benefits to continue to operate it ourself, but we just need to do it at a, the best cost-effective way. So I appreciate your time. I'm not sure what the tangible product of your RFP is, if this report is it, if you have any further obligation with the town to help guide us through where we go from here, or is this the end of your analysis?
It finishes based on the RFP in terms of what was to be done. But the question, I have a final statement after I listen to the other two selectmen. Sleckman-Stone, your thoughts?
Excuse me. This is a multi-dimensional and complex problem. It's going to take, in my opinion, a considerable amount of study. I'm going to want to go over my notes, go over the materials you provided. I want to talk to the stakeholders in particular. I don't believe in polarizing or segmenting communities. I don't really care if seven out of eight people don't golf. I think the golfers are important people in the community, viable contributors to the community. Golf also has some indirect economic benefits, and we've discussed that with our interview. It provides open space. It brings people into the communities that rent motels and cottages and go to restaurants and do all kinds of other things. You're probably going to have to look at, by the way, the 5% cap, it doesn't bother me terribly because that's just a limitation on what the Board of Selectmen can do. It doesn't stop the annual town meeting from doing whatever they want in terms of financial appropriations. It was just checks and balance measures on the part of the golfers that they didn't want the selectmen to hike their fees past that point without their, the town meeting forum. But I think you're going to have to look at the operational costs, town costs versus a potential management contract. I would definitely be opposed to a straight-out lease. I think the town should control its own assets. Those assets were acquired for recreational and open-space purposes and things like that. You asked as a fundamental question at the outset, is this a business or not? It clearly isn't. In fact, I don't think it legally is going to be allowed to be a business based on the order of takings for the Bass River Golf Course and the order of takings for the Bay Berries Golf Course. So I think you're going to have to look at and compare the management costs. And you're also going to have to look at the fees, you know? Can there be a phase in? What's reasonable? What will the golfers support? And I think they will support a fee increase if it points to the viability of the golf course and the quality is there. I think the golfers will support quality. I don't think they'll support a fee just for the sake of a fee. I think they're going to want to see a good product. One thing that wasn't mentioned in the study in... One thing that wasn't mentioned in the study and I think should be looked into, and that is, how do you get back some of the people that we've lost? Now, I don't want to point fingers at anybody, make accusations, make anybody feel bad, but I've heard a lot of complaints about the golf course over the years and people going to Dennis in particular. And the question is, you know, how many members can we get back? If we have a good product, if we, if our customer service improves, if we have the quality, if, as you said, maybe develop the potential of the views in the restaurant at Bass River, maybe you can entice some of those people back. Maybe you can increase the number of memberships and recapture some of the overhead monies that way. I think you have to look at all of those things in combination. You also have to look at the potential cost savings of closing the golf course in the winter. Very frankly, that's something that I never thought about. And, and I don't, I'd like to see the dollars and cents on that, whether there is a savings there and how much it would be. And then I'd also want to look at the grandfather, assuming you grandfathered the current members, and I almost think you'd have to do that. Unless you wanted another revolution. There's a lot of, there's a lot of passion that's involved in golf, and there's a lot of people who are invested financially and socially and emotionally in the golf game. But you could have maybe some kind of modified membership, or either eliminated or some kind of a modified membership going forward to recapture some more of the capital. I think you could probably, with the proper vetting, and I believe that has to include the golf population, I'm very much concerned about what they have to say. They know the golf course. They know the quality of service that's there or is not there. They know the quality of play that is there or is not there. They know the changes that they would like to see made. I think they're reasonable people. And I think they would be subject to implementing changes if it meant the sustainability of the golf course. The other big philosophical question at the end of all of this, however, is if you go back and look at the purposes for which these golf courses were taken, the question arises as to, and I know what Tracy said about golf being a self-sustaining enterprise, the question has to be asked whether, going forward, that's, that's a possibility or not, or whether they're going to need some kind of modest subsidy from, from the general revenues. And that would entail input from not only the golfers, but the other segment of the population. Because there are, there are benefits that golf brings even to the non-golfers. And for the record, I don't play golf. I'm probably one of the only lawyers on the Cape that doesn't. But I have a lot of friends that do. And, you know, I'm happy, it's a form of recreation. I was on the Rec Commission for close to 25 years. I'm a great supporter of recreational activities in the town, quality of life issues. And the fact that I don't do it doesn't mean it's not a good thing to do or it's not good for others. I think golf's a wonderful recreational opportunity for a wide segment of our population. And I don't have the answer, but I think the question has to be asked if it is a modest subsidy, if it's not too burdensome, would the taxpayers be willing to, to do that?
I have a couple more things to add. First of all, I want to say something to Jim. Jim, you've, you've contributed an enormous amount over the last 15 to 20 years. You've positioned us, I think, to do some things for the future by convincing us that we needed to invest substantially in the golf course. And I think that puts us in a good position for the future. And I want to thank you for what you've done. I know in the time that I've been a golfer, I've enjoyed wonderful golf over 10 or 12 years. And many people now who are, are golfing believe that courses are in the best condition they've ever been in. And, well, you hired him. And, and credit Scott for getting the job done, but the guy that made the decision on, on getting him here is, it's important to recognize that.
Thank you.
So I guess there's a couple of things. First of all, our town is, faces a lot of challenges at this point. Our tax rate has increased significantly over the last 10 years or so. Our taxes in dollars have increased dramatically over that time period. We face enormous financial challenges in the next five to 10 years. Two new schools, a new DPW department headquarters. Those are huge projects that will add tremendously to our debt load. If we think a tax rate of $10 is, is small now, just wait, just wait. Our, our community will, will be middle of the road compared to the rest of Massachusetts if we don't take action. And if we add burden from the golf course onto those responsibilities for education, maintenance of our roads and infrastructure and parks, if we add golf onto that, I think we're making a big mistake. The, the commitment that Tracy talked about of golf carrying itself is one that I think we need to sustain for the future, for our town as a whole. And we need to commit to that, or we're going to be in fights every year about this issue, every year. Because as soon as that school gets, gets authorized and, and bills go up by $300 a year, you can bet that lots of the people in town who are not golfers, that 85%, are going to be saying, what the heck is going on with golf? And we're, we're in a position now where we've got high-quality golf courses that deserve support from our golfing community. Now, having said that, I personally am not a believer in pulling the rug out from, from other people. In my business career, I went through organizational transitions, changes, disruptions, whatever you want to call them. Huge reductions in expenses, major changes in direction. One of the principles that the management team that I was very comfortable with, operated on, is you don't kill off your, the employees who have shown loyalty and support, supported your organization forever. And you don't do that to customers either. And I don't believe that we should do that to people that have invested in the golf course with fees over the last 10 years or more. So, so I think we need to find a way to help those golfers continue in our program, not overburden them, but ask them for an increase in their contributions to sustain our courses. It's not right that we have a value that's certainly over $2,000 for membership and we're paying 800 bucks. You know, I'm sorry, I just don't see that as fair. And I'm, I'm waiting for the Enterprise Committee, because I think the Enterprise Committee, as representatives and golfers all, should, should be coming forth to the, to the Select Board with some tough recommendations. I think the other, the other thing I would say is, the difficulty is always with any major change, talk about restructuring a company, any, any kind of major change, it's managing the transition. Communication is important, but our community needs to know about the issues that have been raised here. And we need to do a, a job of communicating that out to the, to everyone, not just the golfers, but to everyone in the community, so that everyone understands the issues that we're grappling with. That may also help with some of the other towns on the Cape. If we communicate that and, and other communities suddenly realize, you know, we've been kind of burying this problem for a long time, and it is a problem, we've got to address it. So everybody will, will start to, to address the, the issue of the bargain that has been, been really given to all of the residents over the years. So, you know, I, I guess I would ask the Enterprise Committee to come back with some, some thoughtful recommendations on how to manage a transition that would make sense for the future of the, of the community.
And we are definitely committed to doing just such a thing. You know, it's interesting to listen to each of you. Everybody comes at it from a little bit bitter, different of a perspective. And on the Golf Enterprise Committee, we all as well come at it as individuals from a little bit different of a perspective. Going forward, I will say this because I know we probably want to wrap it up, get going a little bit, but we have time. I mean, to rush this would be a bad idea because I think that something very valuable will come out of it once we can get to the right place where we want to be. Nothing's going to happen this year. Going forward, we definitely would love to share our input with you. And all I'm going to say, and I don't mean this in aggressive nature, but be ready for some back and forth. That's what's going to take for all of us, to bring everything to the table and then to get something worked out that is feasible for the town, golf operations, and the members. So it might be taking a little bit of slogging through the mud, but we'll get there. We'll get there. I know we will. I have confidence in that fact. I think JJ's given us a ton of valuable information as a springboard. And if we just stick with it, make sure everybody's properly represented, I think we can get it done. So we look forward to it.
Good. Well, I think we have that opportunity with the quality of golf that is, we're presented with at this point. And, and, you know, we look forward to those recommendations. And thank you for everything you've put together. Obviously, it's a substantial effort. And I think the comparisons and the thought that's gone into your observations are very helpful to us.
Thank you. As a final thought, I think Kristin's right on that it is a cooperative process. But you, as part of that, Kristin's addressing the operational policies, procedures, and fees. What still remains to be decided by you is the organizational structure on which you want to operate the golf courses. I heard lease is not a viable option. I heard management, independent management, maybe. Or with Jim departing in six weeks, you have some time if you're looking to hire a director of golf, but there needs to be, excuse me, direction provided on a management company because that RFP process takes three to four months to matriculate. We're people from here and Kristin, and you all would be sitting on a committee, and that doesn't obligate you to make a decision, but at least gives you the opportunity to evaluate the options. And I know Jim and I have different opinions on this. I think Jim would recommend the reduction, retention of a director of golf to replace him. I think fresh eyes of a management company. I've just seen in too many examples where they have come into cities that have gotten immersed like you all have and bring a whole new perspective with tremendous resources, purchasing power, and sophisticated systems that they, the reversal can be quite dramatic. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. I think, you know, I think we have to set some time aside on an agenda, yeah, that sort of rather than later. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to continue our meeting. If you are planning on leaving, it would be helpful.
Are you taking any questions for the golfing?
No. No, not this evening. Thank you. Okay, we'll wait a second for Mike to return. Actually, we can move on with, do we have any appointments?
Yep.
Tonight, we do, okay?
Well, we have a resignation, so I would like to move to accept with appreciation the resignation of Tom Durkin from the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
With thanks. Yeah. Any discussion?
He's been a long time.
No, he's been, he's been fantastic. He's, he wants to spend more time on the Water Resources Initiative, which I think is fantastic. So we're looking forward to him helping us out more on that side of things.
Okay.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And he also mentioned in his notice, which you have in your packet, that the Conservation Commission has actually voted to have Paul Huggins represent him. So I would move that we appoint Paul Huggins to fill the term vacated by Mr. Durkin.
Is Paul a resident?
I believe so, yeah. We, he, he serves on the Conservation Commission and is a resident.
All right. Okay.
So, is there a second?
All right. Yes, second.
So, so he's, but, but Mr. Durkin was the Conservation Commission's representative.
Exactly. He was their representative.
So this is just switching the representative.
This is, exactly. So the new Conservation Commission recommended, representative will be Paul.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. That concludes my report.
Looking at our agenda for the next few weeks.
We actually have a meeting now next...
On the 23rd as well.
Dan.
Slip that in there, Dan.
He didn't want to. He got the look on his face.
I apologize. It's just, it's the timeliness of some of these business.
Is that a required meeting by the process?
Yeah. I would say, I had the meeting from, we met from 9:00 to like 12:30 today at DY. It was a long one. Yeah, I would say that, I would be hesitant tonight to share some of the numbers that we worked on, but there was about 110 different items we had to go down through and decide whether we were going to carry those forward to the submission to Boston. So the valuations done by the two different value engineering outfits that priced these projects have been completed to this point. So based on today's work, there'll be some additional work that they need to do, but I'm hopeful within the next 48 hours or thereabouts, we'll get that document to you, and it will be officially presented to the community through the three-board meeting on Tuesday night. And I think it's important for folks in town to come to that meeting because that will be their opportunity to hear how the final end product is going to be presented to the MSBA in December. But essentially, many of the significant items that drive the cost of the project, there's an opportunity to go lower than what would be proposed on Tuesday night from a cost perspective, but the project won't go any higher than what's presented at Tuesday night. It's unable to go any higher. So hopefully, all those numbers will be to you shortly so that you have plenty of time to review that in advance. time to review that in advance of Tuesday's meeting.
I'm sorry, so this is, I guess I missed that.
This is the Joint Finance Committee Board of Selectmen's Meetings.
Oh, October 9th.
And School Committee on October 9th.
Oh, I did miss that then, all right.
Yeah, that came out, the invitation came out today to you.
Oh, all right.
Two of them.
So, yeah, two of them. So that's the joint, and it's going to include Finance Committee?
Finance, boards from both towns, Finance Committee from both towns, and the School Committee.
And what time of day?
Station Avenue, and I believe it's 6 o'clock.
No, I don't think it is Station Avenue. I think I saw it was at the high school, oh, Station Avenue Cafeteria, 6 p.m.
Cafeteria, 6 p.m.
6 p.m., okay.
So that's the project as it'll be put forward, so there's a lot of things to consider. Kurt was in the meeting today. I think there's some significant opportunity to weigh in on some topics that could affect the price drivers.
All right.
The 23rd meeting, I'm working with the state to get an agenda together. Remember, that was the proposal by the state folks that run the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act program, the program that is reviewing the wind application, to come down and put on a presentation of all that's involved with that process. So hopefully, those details will be ironed out shortly. That is presently scheduled for the DY auditorium. On that date, probably like a 6 o'clock start time.
Okay. All right. So the other thing I think that we have to consider on the agenda is the process for moving forward with the Enterprise Committee for Golf.
Yeah.
And number one, I mean, there's some fairly critical needs there with regard to defining what we do. One, management. Number two, setting fees.
That's correct. So I think the very first thing that has a great immediacy to us is having the committee work with the staff in JJ to develop the guidelines for you to consider on an RFP for that management option. I think it's important at this point to identify, you would only know what the dollar value is that that could cost if you go to the market with a properly crafted RFP. And to JJ's point, obviously, there's advertising, it has to be done with that, but the actual crafting of the document itself may take a month or better. And then you have to go out, advertise it, have a period of time to analyze the responses, and then share it with the two groups.
Can we appoint an interim?
Yeah, so that's something that's, we have to consider quickly. We're looking at those options now. It's likely that we will talk to some candidates for an interim Director of Golf Operations to carry us through whatever endpoint we might end up deciding to do. So yes, that is very much on our high priority list.
Okay. All right. Just looking down the agenda, any other thoughts on items on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know a while ago, we talked about getting a brief update from the DPW on road projects.
Roads, it's coming, yeah.
I just don't see it.
It is supposed to be.
16th?
Yeah.
It's there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe also, an item of interest on that topic, I received an email today, I believe November 1st, if I can just double check. The consultant retained for the Center Street project is looking to go to the public, to have a public forum.
Okay.
And...
So that's coming up?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, Center Street, Route 6A, Homer's Dock, the whole area there.
Okay.
And that should be the very first part of November's.
Okay.
The other item, Mr. Chairman, that I think we should talk about is, early on, we set goals and a number of implementation items. I think, I think we're getting close to reviewing how we're doing.
Yeah.
I think that's something that we periodically need to bring up, go over, see what kind of progress we're making, and have a discussion with the town administrator on the progress.
Yeah, I think that's worthwhile, is, should we focus on the end of November at this point for that?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, perhaps we could roll that in. At the end of October, we have an Invisio applicant update for you, and part of that update is going to be a suite of reporting tools and mechanisms to provide the board with updates on both the goals and those high priority projects that, remember, we talked about. So perhaps we could begin that conversation in what format and forum would be best for the board.
Okay. I think that makes sense.
That's great.
Good. Okay, anything else on the agenda? Okay. Individual items. Mark?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
I'll pass. Tracy? I just want to say, I'm wearing my pink ribbon. It's October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I urge all women to, and men, to do self-evaluations and schedule your mammogram. Early detection is early cure, so that's my two cents for tonight.
Okay, I had a couple of things. After our last meeting where we talked about the Police Department budget, I went back through the Department of Revenue Services website and started looking at some of the economic statistics that are presented there, and it's a pretty robust set of information with regard to expenses, revenues, and so forth. And some things popped out as I was reviewing that, and, you know, there's an awful lot that you could look into, you could spend days, if not weeks, going through the data, but I looked at our Yarmouth revenues, and it raised some questions in my mind, and I'm really talking about our municipal tax base, taxable property lists. Our residential values since the falloff in 2009 have gone down a little bit in that period of time, and I think probably will go back up again, but there's been a dramatic falloff in our commercial and industrial taxable values, 25% in each case. And I'm, and if I look at the Town of Dennis website or information, that trend is not Our personal property values have gone up dramatically in that same period of time. But my point on the commercial and industrial is, number one, why has that reduction occurred? Why have the assessed values gone down so dramatically and not recovered? And number two, looking at that, it gives me pause and thought about, you know, we made a decision about not having a residential exemption. We're effectively giving a substantial commercial and industrial exemption by virtue of the trends that have taken place. We've had a shift to residential tax burden over that period of time, and I'm interested in knowing why.
Can I make a suggestion? I do think it might be helpful if you got those statistics from, and I hate to say this, that there may be some questions about the Department of Revenue, but it may be helpful to just double check those numbers with the numbers that we keep here. I've seen some variations in certain statistics, particularly on that Gateway site and that main site in other municipalities, so I would just...
We just set the tax rate, and I remember asking Mr. Machado how we were in terms of holding the percentage of the difference between the split between residential and commercial. It was the same.
Right, but that's not the question. It's looking at a longer period of time, and what have the trends been?
So Andy, we've asked Andy to evaluate that, and he's also going to reach out to the former assessor in Dennis that has some history. It was anecdotally provided to me that, you know, one of the recent benefits, I suppose, to Dennis was the Patriots Village Complex investment that was done, and at the same time, we haven't had anything of significant magnitude. You get a couple of good-sized commercial projects, and that does rise a lot of the numbers, but, you know, the other thing is that what's going on in the market today, real-time with real estate, wouldn't be reflected by our numbers for about 18 months. The numbers we post are like 18 months behind, so although the real estate market and house values seem to be rising now, it's not reflected in assessment trends. It lags a bit, but Andy is going to do a deeper dive in that and try to get some answers. I will say that an interesting report that we have to get to you shortly is on the episode related to what the impact of septic has had on the commercial base on 28. And it's, you know, Dennis had done a report, commissioned it. It showed, interestingly enough, in their resort communities down there that they're comparatively to off-Cape destinations, their rental rate for hotel rooms is not, does not grow robustly. And what's not happening, obviously, is the reinvestment in these facilities because of the fact that what the owners have indicated was that they don't want to invest in anything while there's the septic situation out there. Contrast that with the preliminary data that came in on Yarmouth. One of the things that struck me was if you were to take the same type of hotel in Yarmouth and put it in Hyannis that has connection to the sewer, it would yield a higher room rate, pretty substantial rate difference. And so with that, you know, anecdotally, I can tell you by talking to one very prominent business owner in town, he had told me since he's been in town over the last 35 years how much money he's had to invest in his septic operation, and it's in the millions of dollars, and how much money he has to have on hand just in case something goes wrong, because he's in the line of work where you've got to fix it quickly, and you've got to be able to have access to capital. And his commentary to me was very pointedly in that, don't you think if I had another option to flush the toilet, I would have rather invested this money in properties around me as opposed to this situation? And I think, you know, from the work that the Uli-TAP had done, we hear that constant theme. So our challenge for this, the Water Advisory Group, is to take a look at, well, what if this did come? What would be the increase in value, and what does that mean to your point, Norm?
Sure.
About what that would do to rise the value of what's remaining in our commercial tract on 28? Because if we don't pay attention to that, it'll continue to decline and decline, and it'll get to the point where it's very difficult to come back.
I'm interested to see, and I'm, I was not trying to suggest errors in the numbers, because I'm truly puzzled by what I was looking at, particularly since Dennis's numbers for commercial have, they've remained stagnant essentially for that entire 10-year period, and their industrial base has gone up to where it exceeds Yarmouth. So, you know, again, my curiosity is, geez, you know, something's going astray here. The other question, and again, and, you know, numbers can be, you know, extracted, and you don't know what the answers are, but, you know, we had the chief of police last week, Frank, talked about issues with the recommendations of the consultant. And I think we've got to think very carefully about that and about, I want to believe what Frank has to say and the department has to say, but at the same time, our consultant has an awful lot of knowledge across the entire country about what makes for a, what creates a cost-effective police organization. And I looked at, and again, in the Department of Revenue database, the 50 towns that have, are within, 25 above our total municipal tax dollar amount and 25 towns below our municipal tax dollar amount, so total budget. And I looked at our spending for police and fire. In both cases, out of the 50 towns, we were number one. Number one. We're spending more than any other community in those 50 towns that have total municipal budgets similar to ours. Now, all that does is raise an eyebrow for me. It's not conclusive. There's a lot of different factors that are taken into consideration with regard to budgeting, but I think it deserves some close attention. And I think some of the factors that were identified by the consultant contribute to that situation, and I think, you know, we need to think very clearly about the direction for the future. And, you know, and I'm not disputing the quality of our police and fire departments. I think we have very high-quality operations, and I have a lot of respect for the leadership. But the numbers are what the numbers are, and we should take a look at it and see what's happening. And, you know, if the numbers indicate an overall question or issue, then I think the consultant has driven down into the details and looked at some of the operational measures and said, you need to make some adjustments in the way you approach your nighttime coverage and the way you approach your shift coverage. And I think we need to carefully consider what the impact of those might have been had we had those adjustments done some time ago, so.
Can I just add one more thing?
Sure.
To that, but this weekend is the Seaside Festival, and I just urge everybody to go out and support the Seaside Festival. There'll be a parade on Sunday, and there's fireworks and bonfire and all sorts of stuff from what I understand, and I know that they have a website. I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's a big weekend for Yarmouth.
It is.
And, you know, we have a committee and a group of people that put an awful lot of effort into making these things happen, so I just want to remind everybody that that's this weekend, and I hope they all go out and...
And some of us will be marching, right?
I hope so. I hope so.
We'll look forward to it. Okay. Moving on to Town Administrator items.
Consent agenda, yes, sir, is actually ironic that you should mention that, is a permit for the bonfire for the Seaside Festival and also a donation to YPD.
Is that, that's not a fee waiver. I'm trying to figure out what the permit was for.
This is for the bonfire, to actually have a bonfire?
Okay.
Yeah.
I never saw that before in our consent agenda.
Probably just never saw it.
Well...
I don't remember it from last year, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen.
That's right.
Well, let's do it.
So we can have a motion?
Motion on the consent agenda?
Remove the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Great. Moving on, there's, we've been trying really hard to get that wastewater advisory meeting off the ground, and I think we were sent some invites for that, and it's potentially scheduled with the visit with Mansfield, Foxborough, Norton representatives for October 25th. That's the second, that'll be the second meeting. We have an upcoming meeting, I believe it's, is it next Wednesday? Is it Tuesday? Yeah, it's actually Tuesday.
I bet it was the time.
Yeah, there's one Tuesday. That's the, that's the first meeting. Dave Young will host that with our group and kind of catch everybody up to speed in a very, hopefully speedy fashion to let them know where we are presently with the wastewater effort, and then kind of put a roadmap out in front of them over the next few months as to where we're going and what's going to be presented to them. That's going to be at the, at Cape Light Compact, yeah, on White's Path, yeah.
That's going to be next Tuesday?
That's Tuesday, the same, unfortunately, it's the same night that we're scheduled to be at...
The joint meeting.
The joint meeting, right.
Okay, so that's not going to work.
Just the way it is, there's like, there's more demands on our time than there are days in the week to get things done, so.
Well, I'll probably be at the Water Resource Advisory.
We'll let you know about the numbers for the school. They're going to be significant.
You want to, you want to snap that?
But we'll have time, no, I mean, seriously, that we're going to have time to...
$117 million, but who's talking?
What's, what's our... So...
What's the max that the state's proposing? What are they going to give us?
They're going to give us 43.8 million. That's the max.
43.8 million, leaving our portion at...
Yeah, one, right now, it's proposed at 117 minus 43, then separated by 60%, that's our carrying cost, so.
Okay. All right. Any other items?
No, I think that's enough. You know, I tried our hardest to get this down to 9:00, Mr. Chairman. I just want that duly noted for the record.
It would be 11:30.
So, we'll have a, just for the public, I don't know if that meeting has been broadcast at all from our joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Dennis.
I just got an email from Ken Jenks this afternoon, they're tracking that down, so we'll get it up as soon as possible, but it's not posted yet.
So, so the public knows the process on that is, hopefully, we'll have some type of answer by...
Well, we've got a tentative meeting scheduled, or...
Yeah, we're working on that, so we were going to put our own team together first to get us back on the same talking points and then go into the next one, yeah.
We have a date for that meeting?
I do believe there was some...
What is the purpose? We're going to start all over again? I thought we were going to wait until we got their answer.
Mike, I'll have to send you an email. There were so many emails, I went back and forth on that.
But, I mean, was the date settled on? I know you were drawing out several dates.
I was, we were waiting to hear back.
Not yet, it's not confirmed on the D Y one.
I thought we weren't going to do that. I thought we were going to wait for their answer. I thought by mid-October, they said they were going to give us an answer. What's the, what's the purpose of continuing that? I'm just curious. I thought the way we left it was that they were going to give us an answer by the middle of October.
My recollection was that they said that they wanted to meet to discuss and finalize the split on the operating costs as well as the capital for the new building because Cheryl is the new member, is taking Cleon's place, that they wanted the full group, including the Finance Committee, to be together and make that determination.
Not with us.
That was my sense.
Not with us, though. They were going to meet.
No, she said that the subcommittee, the negoti, the full negotiating team. That was my takeaway.
Right, that was my take as well. And, you know, we're, I think, I think we'll just be moving forward with that process at this stage.
For the next three years.
Hopefully, but if it isn't three weeks, that doesn't bind us for the future.
No, that's correct, right.
You know, but, you know, I don't think we need to set or should set unreasonable expectations in terms of timeframe. We've been six years plus in this process, and we're going to see it through.
There you go. You heard it here.
Your body language just...
You heard it here.
I'm not sure if I have six more years in me, you know? I don't know.
Well, you weren't here for the first six.
I know, I was kind of figuring that.
Interestingly, I received a call yesterday morning from the Cape Cod Times, and they had just interviewed Paul McCormick, and he gave them a very optimistic outlook on how things looked for the negotiations, and they asked for my feelings on that, and I echoed that in order to remain positive.
That's great.
It was a good article, it's up now online.
Is it? Okay, all right, well, good.
We're getting close.
But, yeah, and, you know, I said at the meeting...
How can you not be optimistic, Norm, if you're in Dennis, right?
Said at the meeting...
Getting close.
We are...
How many times have I heard that? We're getting close.
If you look at how much of the total operating budget that we're looking at, that we're arguing about, it's tiny, tiny amount. And if everybody can keep their heads wrapped around that and move forward...
Exactly, so that could be the motto, it's tiny.
Yeah, that's right.
Everybody's got to give a little bit, right? What's that? Everybody's got to give a little bit.
All right, you have a motion to adjourn.
Well, by all means, I motion, I move to adjourn.
Okay. Second?
Second.
I think we should talk about it for three more years.
Those in favor, please say aye.
We're close, it's just a tiny...